Recommend. I wish I would have recommended that you table the decision so that we could kind of put our heads together and work out some language that that you guys were comfortable with sending to the county commission. But what ended up happening was if you if you recall, there was a emotion made to. Steve, I can. A motion made to forward the rec the the with the language as proposed by the applicant. And having having looked back at the language that on on the left side that we originally proposed, I don't blame you because it was it was better language what the applicant was proposing. And I think he brought up some good points during the meeting, if you remember, so this was back in February that you made a recommendation on this. It was a four to two vote. So for to approve the recommendation, sorry, for for to to recommend that that the developers proposed text we approved to oppose. I guess the issue was. And the reason why I wish it would have been tabled was because we could have gone back and addressed those concerns and then I'm going to going to the county commission without those concerns being listed as as findings for that motion. But what? I just passed this out. Left side is what sign code amendment, what you guys saw back in February, right side is what the commission ended up adopting. So I will point out it wasn't the same language that we were proposing. I just want to remind everyone, I guess firstly, what the what the developer was originally proposing was 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 this, and I can display it on the screen here. Might be hard for some to read since we're down a little ways, but they proposed to just add a new section that said subdivision entry signs may also be placed on a retaining wall signage in this case is not to exceed a height of four point five feet nor with the forty feet. And I just to just to go over with you what what we were originally proposing on the left side. One reason we proposed the way proposed it the way that we did on the left side was because the code had two sections that referenced allowances for subdivision entry science. If you go to the top of the red paragraph on the left side, you'll remember that it used to say just there in in red, the strike through what talks about one monument sign not to exceed six feet in height and ten feet in width. Talks about a landscape burn two feet from grade. We wanted to consolidate and put that all in one section under subdivision entry signs.
Why didn't we change it?
Change that specific section?
The applicant.
So sorry, backing up more. My bad. The there was originally it was a applicant driven request. It was, I think, the applicant was Wolf Creek LLC or something. They wanted to add the ability to have a wall sign placed on a retaining wall.
Okay.
So they were proposing a code change. Charlie and I sat down and looked at this. We said, you know what? We like their language. We think we can still get them what they want by making a few tweaks. Those tweaks are what we took to you in planning commission, and I think rightfully so. You had some concerns with those tweaks. Let's see. But it just just backing up. Our other proposal was to go down to left left side again, was to go over to one, ten, two, nine, other allowed signs where it talks about subdivision interest signs again and add the language in blue there. First of all, we wanted to change it to neighborhood entry signs because if we felt that if an entire neighborhood wanted to have an entry sign as opposed to just each individual subdivision that 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 should probably be allowed if they wanted to do that. And this is where we added the applicants. Some language that would have got the applicant what they wanted. Neighborhood entry sites each. I'm on the left side again. Each neighborhood or development may be allowed one ground sign or if affixed to a retaining wall wall sign not to exceed six feet in height and forty feet in width. So I'll point out really quick, we initially said they they're asking for four point five. When I go up to six, I think the planning commission had a little bit of a concern with with going higher, going taller than the applicant. So initially suggested, so I just want to put that as well. Can I'm going to continue reading on line twenty nine there. The sign may be placed on a landscape mounted burn up to two feet from grade in neighborhoods where a divided center island has been approved in a public or private street, the planning commission may approve two entry signs with one sign on either side of the street. So that was our proposed language. The planning commission, I want to point out some of the concerns that you had. There was discussion that that our language that we propose to staff did not specify the difference between a ground and monument sign. I remember that coming up. And I apologize, I wasn't prepared in the meeting to have that conversation. But I wanted to let you know, we actually define that. It's the same thing. We define it in our code before these changes were even proposed. We had a definition for ground slash monument sign. And I'll just read it if you were curious. It says the term ground slash monument sign means a freestanding ground sign mounted on a base, but not attached to any building or land. So that was one thing I wanted to address. Let's see. There was another concern that the way that we were proposing to change it in blue would allow a monument sign as opposed to a wall sign to to be bigger than than the code previously allowed. If you read monument sign, it was six. Let me go back and sorry. Go up to line fifteen, line fifteen, it talked about six feet in height and ten feet in width specifically for a monument sign. And rightfully so, the planning commission said, well, are we if if we allow it to be down to line twenty nine, if we allow it to be six by forty, then why are we increasing monuments sign? That is something that I at least I didn't consider when I wrote this. So what we did when we when we took your recommendation, we 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 still wanted to incorporate some of the changes that we were proposing, the consolidating of only one section that talks about neighborhood entry signs. But we also wanted to address a few as a few of your concerns when we brought it to the to the county commission, which is why you see different language on the right. It's not super different. But I'll let me go over those changes with you real quick. So the first thing we did is we got into the definition of the wall sign, starting on line two. And we wanted to amend that so that it didn't so that a wall sign didn't have to be attached to a building. The way that it was previously written makes it kind of seem like you could only have a wall sign if it's on a building. Looking down at the second change, that's that's the exact same thing that we were proposing before. Let's get rid of this section that talks about subdivision energy science because we're going to talk about it later on. And we do the same thing. Down in one, ten, two, nine, starting on line twenty five, proposing to eliminate that language, but let's call it a neighborhood entry sign. And now let's specify the difference of of how you can have a neighborhood entry sign on a monument sign and on a wall sign, which we didn't do before. One of the things you'll notice is we under under wall sign, we said, okay, let's the planning commission didn't like that we were going to that we were proposing to go taller than the applicant was proposing. I don't I didn't really like four point five feet. It's kind of a kind of a weird number to regulate. So we just said, let's just go and even, I guess it's not even a number. It's a solid number, five. Five feet in height and forty feet in width, which is six inches taller than the applicant is proposing. That's what ended up getting approved. We feel that it's still got the applicant what they wanted. We also feel that it it made the ordinance a little bit less redundant. So that's that's what the county commission ended up adopting. But again, I I wish I would have interrupted you guys. I kind of don't like to do that when you're deliberating, but I wish I would have just said, why don't you guys table it and we'll come back with something that you like before moving into the county commission. But the way that the motion ended up happening didn't work out that way.
When this went to the commission, did it go to them as written and they approved it as written? Or did they make changes during bear the liberation?
We took the county commission asks us to go to them in work session before we bring any ordinance amendments. What we took to them in work session was the right side.
Okay.
And they they said that they were comfortable with what was what was written on the right side. And that they they moved it forward. Now, when when I did go to the work session with the county commission, we did express that there were some concerns with setbacks. The county commission didn't end up sharing those same concerns, and I think the reason was because in a subdivision where you've got a retaining wall, a lot of the time that retaining wall is holding up a road or holding up dirt that's adjacent to a road. And so they felt that why not allow a developer to put a sign right against a retaining wall, even if it is on a road? And so they didn't request that we add any specific setbacks for retaining wall signs. I think another concern that the planning commission had was the way that retaining walls can look. The way our codes written and the way it was written before any of these these changes were proposed was we don't we don't have a rule on what your retained law needs to be made up. That may be something that we need to look into. I think there was another concern with some of the no voters on the original motion, which was the way that the sign looks. And I should have probably just gotten up and told you there are we have requirements on materials, the way that the way that signs need to look. If you guys are if you guys are curious to know what those are, our codes already talk about this, the materials are signs may be constructed of painted stained sandblasted or carved wood, brick, stone, textured concrete or for similar material. It talks about glass, metal, which is painted or or treated to to prevent reflective glaringly be used copper brass rod iron and other metals. They remain untreated to allow to develop a natural patina. We talked about this with the county commission. They said, okay, we already have some standards on the way signs need to look. If we if I guess the real issue is size, if they were okay with the size and they ended up being okay with the five by forty. I don't know if that covers anything you wanted me to cover, Rick, but that was those were the changes.
There was quite a bit of comment on the dark sky, but that's not really an effective brand. They'd have them all the way through.
So yeah, there was there was comment on the dark sky when it got to the commission as well. And the way that the ordinance is written, it says seventy five rulings per square foot, which is the requirement up in the valley right now. Yeah, it might be a little bit brighter because the size is allowed to be a little bit bigger, but I don't know that it's I think the commission felt that it wasn't. I don't know that they're experts on on light brightness, but I don't didn't feel that they thought it would be too bright.
They felt there was sufficient standards. Any questions?
Thanks.
Charlie, it looks like you're up.
I've got two items on the agenda. Today, I'm gonna share my screen here.
You define towards what agriculture is.
Here again. Yes, to say. Am I not sharing? So agritourism is a it's a method of allowing people with agricultural operations to attract tourists to their operation. Our agritourism ordinance actually allows quite a few things. In it. So we have a specific ordinance. It's titled chapter one oh eight dash twenty one. And I think this was in your packet from two readings ago, was intended to be on the agenda as a hearing we had a whole session. And so if you were to go through, I think this is exhibit, I think this is exhibit C in that packet. It'll give you all the ins and outs, but just a few ideas of what can happen in agritourism.
If somebody asked me.
Yes, it was actually decent. Daisy Johnson was here to an application. And he's representing someone specific in the in the valley. Permitted activities, for example, such as re dwelling units, agro ecology, bed and breakfasts, glamour camping, clamping conference or education centers, single family dwelling, health farm, motor coach, barn dances, community garden, community agriculture, corn maze, educational classes, farm museum, park tour. There's a whole bunch of different things listed that go above and beyond what the traditional zoning would have otherwise allowed. But it can only occur if you have an agricultural operation happening. If you look at this table, it also tells you how any of these uses might be allowed based on the size of the agricultural operation. So a market garden, which is agriculture, agricultural operation that is three to five acres. A family farm, which is five to ten acres, a small farm, ten to twenty acres, a medium farm, twenty to forty, and a large farm, forty to eighty, and a ranch, eighty plus acres. And the asterisks or the dots or whatever these are. They just denote if that particular use is allowed with that particular acreage of farm, for example. Let's say a bed and breakfast in, which allows up to sixteen rooms. Well, it's not allowed on a three to five acre market garden, not allowed on a five to ten or the ten to twenty. I'm in this row right here, but then it would be allowed on a medium sized farm that's twenty to forty. So you can see how this code was created in a way that tries to allow the more intense types of non agricultural uses to be allowed on the larger farms. And then the lesser intense non agricultural uses to be allowed on the smaller farms with the whole intention being that the if it's a if someone's staying on the property, like let's just say it is a bed and breakfast or clamping or whatever, that they are there to learn about the farm, basically to into a tour of the farm and to have make a class on the farm or something like that. Something that's used very often, I think, what we recommend might have two agritourism operation. Maybe three.
There's three up in the valley.
Are they still in operation?
Quite a bit, yeah.
Some of the corn mazes and stuff like that, you see out west, those are agritourism operations, and that's how they can operate our commercial type of attraction.
Is it a temporary thing or is it a prominent? Well, I guess with the bed and breakfast, it's going to be more of a prominent.
If if you're putting in the facilities, that would be more prominent. Yeah. So let's think about the corn mazes or pumpkin, you pick pumpkin patches and stuff like that. That might happen out out west. Prior to the agritourism ordinance being in effect, we would have addressed that through a temporary use permit, for example, or a conditional instrument that is allowed on temporary basis. Requiring the landlord to come in every year and we up that. Through agritourism, they can just get a permit that essentially shows what they're going to do on the property, or at least the activity areas. And just have that permit that runs with the plan. So they have to come to keep coming in every year to the if we know this, for example, that their parking areas overflowing and flowing out on the streets and everybody else's yards or whatever. At that time, we can go back and say, hey, this is out of compliance from what your original permit was. You come back in and have additional reviews, for example.
There's something I did last fall. I'm coming up by the monastery. They had old school there. They sold pumpkins that were there and they also left some of them on the three where is that?
On monastery property, it's the McFarland family that did that.
Yeah. So was that a conditional use in the zones? Is that how we treated it then?
If it was if it was agritourism, agritourism is conditional in all the zones that it's allowed. I don't.
This is asking for in a new zone where currently it's not.
You got it. So the shoreline zone does not allow agritourism. The applicant is asking for it to allow agricultors, and I'll walk you through the shoreline zone and what purposes is the McFarland farm stand. Was that a farm stand or was that?
They built a structure. There's a permanent structure.
I believe they got a condition. For maybe they maybe they I believe they got a conditioning permit for that for that. Okay. So that might not have been agricultural, and that might have been a farm stand, and some of our axons would do allow roadside. Okay, so.
So I can understand. What's the tie in between a trailer park? In agritourism, what I don't see the the tie between the two.
They took a motor coach or caravan area?
Yeah. Because the Navy has a motor coach.
I think what the original crafter of this ordinance was thinking was that's not too dissimilar from like glamour camping. And so maybe allowing for an RD park. People come park their RVs, go learn about the farm, come back. They had there has to be a tie. There has to be a relationship. If there's not, people are just going to use it for recreational use. Then they'd be out of compliance with this ordinance. So people who are there should be taking part in whatever agricultural operations are happening. That's the intention, at least of the.
There has to be agricultural operations.
There has to be an agricultural operation. Well, this the code itself actually helps. I could say refine what an agricultural operation is. If you just look at the definition of agriculture, it's the cultivation, tilling and production of land. And so that's pretty broad, garden in the backyard. But a couple of things that the agritours ordinance does in refining what that means is assigns an amount of acreage, and that's not just the lot, that is the actual agricultural operation happening. So if it's three to five, five to ten, ten, twenty, et cetera, has to be that much acres acreage being actively used as an agricultural operation in the vertical. So whether it's tilling or ranching or whatever that.
So this picture doesn't, I can't quite tell the where is it? Where is this picture here depicted that? I assume that's where they want this to go.
That's the property that they're looking at?
Looks like it's in a wazai neighborhood. Residential or residential then.
It might be. I normally ask applicants not to include. Random people there all the time. And this is clearly the way it is kind of interesting.
Where is this? What part of the valleys is it?
Well, okay, so up on the screen. One of the things I did advise you to do is not look at the picture that they're looking at because they're talking about a very specific property. But this zone change, if it does, if it's affected the way they ask for it, it'd be everyone in the shoreline zone. So the kind of the darker greenish color that looks like it wraps around the reservoir here. That is the shoreline zone. The area that I've highlighted in red, those are the only areas of shoreline zone that are held in private property. And so this ordinance wouldn't be applicable to the federal land that where the lake is, but it would be applicable to these little islands of private property. The property that they're talking about is somewhere in this particular area here, right behind Trevor's house. Yeah, I'm just kidding. I'm actually not heading somewhere over there. And so if this went into effect, it would only affect these particular properties.
So today, if somebody wanted to do this in one of those areas, they could seek a conditional use permit today?
Today, they would be able to do it in maybe this lighter green area here. But in this area here, no, it's not allowed at all.
Not at all.
But if this ordinance request goes into effect, then they could seek a conditional use permit to do. It's not a by right. They would have to get a condition.
This sounds pretty interesting. We improved this. I'm going to start glamour camping.
I think you already can if if I know what zone you're in.
I'm in shoreline zone.
Oh, are you? Okay.
So when I read and you label that whole peninsula is shoreline and I can do it.
Yeah, so let me.
All that and dark. You have to be three to five.
I grow one plant. So this stretch right here, that's all shoreline wrapping around. This is all shoreline.
Yeah.
And that shoreline and that shoreline. Now technically all of this kind of greenish color is shoreline, but that's all federal land. So only the areas inside these red polygons are private property governed by the shorelines though. That makes sense.
What can you do agriculture in a shoreline zone?
Yes. And so that's the that's the objective of our review here is does the general plan, number one, support agritourism in the shoreline zone. That's our question number one. This is when we're recommending policy, we should see does the general plan.
So support agriculture because where agriculture is in agritourism with agriculture.
That's right. So the general plan doesn't specifically say anything about agritourism in this context. It does say something about supporting agritourism operations where it's allowed. It doesn't say change other codes to allow agritourism. But if the general plan doesn't get that specific. What the gentleman does say is that the shoreline area is ideal for agricultural operations that's similar to the A three areas. And then if you read the purpose and intent of the shoreline zone, let me give you guys that. A general description is the shoreline zone has been established as a district in which the primary use of land is for farming and for recreational purposes. In general, this zone covers the portion of the unincorporated area of the county, which is occupied by pine view reservoir and shores adjacent there to. This zone is characterized by farms and pasture lands situated adjacent to the shore of the pine view reservoir and interspersed by dwellings, recreational camps, resorts, and outdoor recreational facilities. I'm gonna put in a little side note here. Shoreline zone also encompasses the Great Salt Lake. I don't know why this is specific, why it specifically says pine view. But it's also out west. However, there's no part of the shoreline zone out west that's not either federal state by any, so just a little side note. And then the objectives, right, the next one down of the shoreline zone are to number one, promote the use of land for agriculture and for fish, wildlife, recreational purposes, both public and private. Two, facilitate the conservation of water and other natural resources. Three, to reduce hazards from floods and fires. Four, preserve open space, natural scenic attractions, natural vegetation and other natural features within the zone. And five, to ensure adequate provisions for water supply, domestic sewage disposal and sanitation. So those are the specific objectives of the shoreline zone.
So it sounds like it was just an oversight, not doing agricultural or agritourism in the shoreline zone.
I couldn't give you that answer. I I wasn't here at the time that we were talking about it, and so I don't know for sure why it was not.
What is there?
Bee fishing. But.
Bee fishing. Charge for fishing. So you can't win the beaches. No, you can't access. You can't access a beach unless you go through like, you follow the shore. You cannot. You're not supposed to do that. I think long as there's fish farms.
Were you seeing fishing? Was that in the agritourism ordinance?
And a couple.
Yeah. Okay.
So again, this those S one zones right now is nightly rentals allowed in there?
No.
No STR in there.
No, no, in the I don't recall if so, let's comparing the AV three and the S one zones together. I don't recall if the AV three allows like bed and breakfast. I know the FB three allows bed and breakfast, like the the zone that's up in the Nordic area. Do you recall bed and breakfast in the AV three zone? I can pull that up in just a minute and just have have a peek at that. But the S one zone currently.
You said AV three though?
Yeah, would you mind?
Thank you.
Looking at. Sorry.
We're I was looking for short term rentals.
No, bed and breakfast. Yeah, I know. I know for sure. Sure. Short term rental.
Yes. If you walk down on that land and the peninsula you can. So I'm and eighty three. They're the same. Yeah. They're dream fun. Yeah. The agritourism is different. You can't have agritourism without farming. But you can have farming without agritourism.
Yeah.
Right.
He is one. I know who wrote the ordinance, still works for the county. I can chat with them and find out what the reason was that it was not included in the S one zone. I would guess that the original proposal probably had it in it unless there was an oversight on his part. So he may have some better information.
Bed and breakfast are not permitted in any agriculture. Of the agritourism zone.
It would be allowed as an agricultural tourism type use.
Right.
But just a bed and breakfast are not allowing.
Just to be clear, we already defined the agricultural use is growing one plant. Like are we opening the doors to all kinds of glamour camping? I have a garden.
What's happening?
Are we really, we, we can't manage the STR here or we can't properly. You know, manage the STR problem, but we're gonna somehow be able to say you aren't doing it. You're having classes. And glamour camping.
Yeah. Okay. So if you're gonna do a two room bed and breakfast. You would have to have at least, uh, five to 10 acres of land. Uh, that is devoted to an agricultural operation. If it is completely devoid of any use except for one plant, I don't know, that'd be really hard to say that's an agricultural.
Yeah, they're very difficult. In all the ones that we've taken before the planning commission. There's been viable agriculture operation part of that.
So I guess I'm thinking of this one because there's not really an agricultural operation where they're wanting to do this. So the code says. Why no, but if we have to have more than an acre, they've got like five, four acres over there maybe. And it's just an open dealer.
They have to show us how they're doing the call. And then you have to show us typically, we're gonna need to see the rights for water so that we can see how it's working like that west. Pumpkin patches and things like that. Monastery, um, they share that.
And that one, there is, I live near there. That one for sure is agritourism.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, no question. That's, there's no camping, no lodging, no. It just grow pumpkins and stuff and.
So does this change the code to where anybody that's in this zone could do agritourism?
After getting a conditional use permit, yes.
So it's not required for conditional use for that.
Yeah. And we're obligated to approve a conditional instrument if they can show compliance.
Check the boxes, right? But if we, if this doesn't get in the. The code, then. It's not allowed. It's gonna be a conditional use permit. So the code requires, uh, the agriculture is the preferred and primary use on the property. And it says that, um, that has, the subject property has been qualified under the Farmland Assessment Act. Or that the subject property is currently or will within the next growing season, season. Producing an agricultural product in the amount that merits or exceeds the production requirement as established. By the Farmland Assessment Act. So. One sunflower won't cut it. You gotta have a crop of sunflowers. So one plant, you could have one type of crop. But it has to be more than just one plant.
There's also in the agritourism ordinance under, um, production, uh, an agritourism operation shall, with exception of winter season. Actively and continuously produce an agricultural product for sale and purchase. In the event the tourism operations agriculturally product agricultural productivity ceases or becomes improperly maintained. As determined by the planning commission, the right to operate an agritourism business under conditional use permit may be revoked. So there are some protections. Um, I mean, if they're really bad at growing crop, but they're still trying, maybe. That's a way to get around the ordinance. They could do a bed and breakfast or something like that, but. Um, there has to be a tie between that bed and breakfast and then being not very good farmers.
We might, sorry, some, I was just gonna say my grandpa used to say that if he had all the money in the world, he'd farm it till it was gone.
Wouldn't take long.
It wouldn't take long.
Yeah, they ended up, uh, we approved an agriculture operation on this, did agritourism. And they eliminated the agriculture operation with it, we would come back to the planning commission, but it revoked the condition use. Because now they're violation of their. That's another mechanism in place.
So is there? Is it in the valley or is there any precedent to tie all these different lodging? Options to agritourism. Obviously at the pumpkin place would seem successful last year. They had no logic. Why does there have to be lodging attached to this?
So there does, an agr- uh, an agricultural or agritourism operation doesn't have to do lodging. They can choose to do. And so all of these additional agritourism uses, they could choose any one of those things as long as they've got the size of farm. And they're actively producing.
And did this say what type of farming or what their draw would be or what, why people would want to come here other than lodging? Well, that wasn't in here, was it?
Um. Uh, it is in the agritourism ordinance itself, so.
No, with this application or this didn't say what they were going to grow or how they were gonna.
No.
They would have to do that.
When, when they come in for a conditional use permit for an agritourism operation, they'll have to tell us what their agricultural operation is.
That's one of the details required if the ordinance change. They, you know, have to do that.
So they could do. And here they're farm to table, so they could essentially start a restaurant. And add a pop up type restaurants. And lodging.
Mm-hmm.
Trailer.
Yeah, and a bed and breakfast is required to provide, um, food service. Uh, and so it wouldn't just be a short term rental that need to have someone there to provide that breakfast.
But a trailer park.
Um, no, uh, not in that case, no. Yeah. So as you're looking at these extra uses. Um, glamour camping might not require it, uh. Uh, motor coach or caravan area probably wouldn't require it. But a bed and breakfast would because we've got specific requirements and another section of the code about the.
There was one person who used that and it ended up not getting approved because they couldn't get in through the health department. Because they have to provide adequate subjects to service and have a handle on that. They can't just. You know, bring the RVs in and then haul it out.
Right.
That's not. I can picture where it is. Almost forty enter into South Fortin.
Yes.
And then there was another one that they got a temporary exception of the Powder Mountain, which they, uh, county commission can give a six month temporary exception. And they did that upon, when you go up, uh, to Powder. And then you go to the very, um. When you go into their new development, at very end, they allow a sixth month, um, at some time. It can't ground area where they actually hauled in and all about. But after that, it was, they couldn't get just sooner. That happened. And it was actually kind of nice. I went up there and looked at some of these. This nice planting operation.
Yeah.
Well, general plans is. We're supposed to promote agriculture. And. Your grandpa's gonna go broke. Maybe a little slower if he has some older. Revenue sources to keep the farm going. You can do this in any AV three. With conditional use. Yeah, conditional use. And eighty three is all over the place. We can check with the person who wrote it later, we mentioned and find out exactly why.
There's a, there's a hint in the ordinance that I just saw.
Here's my concern, just looking at the map and the proposed area. I mean, this is sort of residential neighborhood, right? So you're gonna. Essentially, if this zone got changed, where I'd allow this. This guy's house is back here in the corner of his property. Parking lot's probably gonna be up towards the front. You're gonna have some glamping going on, just guessing what they're doing there. It doesn't seem like. I don't know. If that was my neighborhood, I would want. But the zone, it's, I mean, it probably includes along these properties are three to five acres.
And the AV three zone allows a lot of uses that I think people who are in a residential neighborhood wouldn't appreciate their neighborhood. We see that pretty routinely. Um, Western Weaver has seen that also. They're saying we don't have an, a agricultural one acre zone out here. We have a residential one acre zone that happens to have agricultural. Because they could see the impact that agriculture is having, residential and residential is having on agriculture. A lot of different uses that are allowed in those zones. If it was strictly a residential zone, there would, it would be residences and things that are accessory to a residence. And maybe churches, maybe preschools, maybe things like that would also be allowed, but. Primarily residential where the zone itself, both shoreline and the AV three zone. Um, are not strictly residential. In fact, not even primarily intended to be residential. Um, they located this other way. As if all those uses are intended to occur. I think. Really, in an ideal world, when somebody does a residential subdivision, they would resume to a residential use, or sorry, a residential use. But we haven't gotten there yet.
So to be clear, no agriculture, agritourism can happen without a conditional use permit. Like. So if we, if we make this change, nothing happens unless somebody comes back.
That's right. That's right. And at that time, parking noise, lamping.
It does make sense to make the change considering what's already zone shoreline, whether. Whether most of these people care that their shoreline or not, quite honestly, cause. Lot of them, like, so some of this like down Springtown Road, I mean. That's a lot of land to be shoreline, but I mean, if that. I, it doesn't bother me in that way because it's, it's a real agritourism, but you know, looking at the lamping. You can have two. Two tents per five acres. That's a lot of, that's not very many, many tents.
No, and I was gonna point that out about a trailer park. It's, uh, I think it's one site per five acres, no more than twenty sites.
It just seems to me that this is a. Shortcut or a side cut way to get. A lodging business going in places that are near the reservoir and otherwise you could never do and.
Yeah.
And to me, it, it seems contrary to. I think what the county commission has said about not expanding that lodging in zones where. Wasn't previously allowed.
Yeah.
You could open up a restaurant. I mean, it opens a local restaurant.
Yeah, and it just seems to open. A lot of door and it seems to me if this was a real farming operation, this letter from Bagelby would. Say what that was. You know, these guys are real farmers. They've been doing whatever for years. Now they want to take it to the public tonight.
Look at that though, and I had a lot of, I got some cows like Maddox, some we butcher them, serve in chief of public and go a restaurant. It'd be nice to be able to have a steakhouse there and a regular steak. And so like, I agree. However, like you look at this and one, one that was on the topic last time was, uh, Sunnyfield, right? Sunnyfield's got a corner in this. Right? And you talk about what they've got going on there. They could, this would actually be a good spot for that, right? They could do weddings, all kinds of things in that area that would be.
They could do that already.
They can do it with park, but now if you, if this changed, there were other portion of that look, well, I think that little corner is there. Would be also.
Yeah.
Included in that, but so like I say, that's like an example of a farm that's already going that might use this. Where I don't know of any others in there that would use that, that is given time that are actually.
Sunnyfield could do it today with their current.
With the AV three zone.
They could do it partially. So if they open this up, they could have more.
Mm-hmm, more acres.
More, they could have more glamour tents, right?
Right, so.
Well, you can do a restaurant in an AV three.
An agritourism restaurant. They could, they could do one. You could do it in your house. You should. Montgomery.
And like if it walks and make it, uh, can the class like the duck and say eighty three and. Why not? Due to be less restricted unless there's a real reason. Not to restrict or too restricted.
Well, there's, I think that it's a, so. While I have concerns about particular areas of this. Where you want it, yeah, there's, there's the coverage of the conditional. That doesn't say like that's good, but like, I think that's not a big deal to make that change. Yeah, some of these are pretty restricted, but it really wouldn't affect many people.
So something else, as you think about the, your policy position on, on whether or not you want this to be allowed or not allowed. So that I'm asking, that the applicant is not asking for, is to take the opportunity in the shoreline zone, I've actually already drafted it up. To bring that zone in, under the same conventions that we've been changing a lot of our other zones where we're just. The categorization, the land use tables, making it look a little bit more like what you see on the screen as opposed to, uh, the lists. Just trying to provide some standardization of the organization of the organs. Doesn't change any of the policies that are in the zone or is not intended to change the policies. Just intended to. Recraft the way that particular zone was. There's an end goal to all of these. Reach, uh, categorical and organizational restructuring. That end goal is to make one land use table that rules them all. So you can compare how this use is allowed in any other zone. And, and provide a more effective and efficient means of making a, an analysis, uh, on that use by use spaces. But that's longer term.
Say again. What other agritourism businesses besides that pumpkin? Main roads like a heading due or something like that, is that considered? I don't know much, I hope.
I don't think the petting's in this. There is an allowance for exempt custom cutting. Um, I don't know why we call it that, but for custom meat betting, they might've gotten that permit instead.
So are there other? Agritourism businesses in the valley that have. In the AV three that have this, are using this, uh, lodging exemption?
Well, lodging. I don't.
I don't know.
Think so.
But I can, I can get you an answer on that.
Yeah, it's pretty limited. Yeah, there is one when you go up Monte Cristo, um. Yeah, I don't think they have lodging this year. I think there might have been some approval for lodging. Or right now, it's adding to the shore.
Also left in the AV three and.
So everything on here goes to AV three. Here's adding a shore.
Yeah, if you were right on the other side of the zone line, you'd be.
But that is the same thing we get going on with this. Be interesting to know why they didn't include it when they wrote the shoreline.
Um.
Not be interesting, because maybe there's a reason when we're not thinking.
Let me give you a. There's a little clue, uh, in the ordinance itself. Um, I don't know if it's the actual answer, but. Uh, the ordinance says, sorry, forgive me, agricultural ordinance. Agritourism. Uh, primary use, I think Bill, uh, just mentioned part of this agriculture is the preferred use in the agriculture zones. Therefore, all agritourism uses or activities shall be, uh, complimentary and clearly accessory to the primary agricultural use. I think they were just targeting the ag zones, the zones that have an A in them. I'm, I'm willing to bet and I'll get some information from the author that they didn't look at the S one zone as an ag zone. Even though if you look at the purpose and intent of the S one zone, it does say that it's preferred and primary uses ag.
But it's kind of a unique area.
It is.
There's not many.
Yeah.
Probably the only, one of the only places.
Yeah, I would agree.
Of course, I would prefer the shoreline zone be more like vacation homes. Like access to the lake, like, like Bear Lake.
Sure.
I might get, everybody upset at me for that.
That'll never happen.
If they, if it becomes a state park, possible.
Hey, yeah. Do you want me to write that into this proposal?
The becoming state park. I talked to one of the commissioners about it. He said they bring it up with the federal, with the, like, the state rep or the. The federal representatives. Whatever the house reps guy and. And the nurse that they bring it up. On every meeting. I don't know if you guys have heard the same thing, but. That they would prefer. I, I think it'd be better for everybody.
Yeah, so one of the, I can tell you. One of the reasons. Because there are so many federal park type operation camping operations scattered around this area within this forest. In Pineview, and they're all run by contractors. Pineview pays for that. So they couldn't get, as it stands right now, the federal government couldn't get a contractor. To operate all those little outlining here, like outlining operations. Without them also operating Pineview, which is where all of their profit comes from. So it's sort of the economic engine. That lets the federal government run all these, the first small camping operations.
Yeah.
They'd have to figure out a different way to come to it, but if they gave up.
When they build a bed and breakfast, that takes expensive rights, right? When they build a bed and breakfast, that takes fancy rights, right? Not in this case, that's a separate right.
Camping campgrounds were free. And Texas paid for the campgrounds. And the forty-three that's got its money. A lot of it can sell in Pittsburgh.
I, I think, I'm, so I thought about that quite a bit. And there, I don't think, I, I. I don't know the monies of the, I don't know the money situation. But I don't think money. For me. It would be more of a limiter of bringing people to the site, because if it was free, you'd get overrun. So it's more of a way of saying. We have to somehow control it, what's the best way? That's.
So the worst service tends to make every access point where you park. Or pine you pay. So the ones on the Huntsville side where. Are even to park right now. Even later, that will all be back.
Yeah, I was in Springdale a couple of weeks ago and they've got a really slick pay, paid apart even on the public streets. Uh, they've got a little kiosk every few hundred feet, you just go and you tap your card and. Uh, that's your payment.
You guys have any comments on this? Sure.
In your.
Since I'm in eighty-three, I have, whatever, I can do the same thing right now.
Yeah, you have to get a conditional use permit, but you could do it.
Yeah.
The changes that staff are proposing, it's in the packet that you guys received, if, if that's been. Uh, round filed, then it'll be in the next packet as well, before your next meeting.
Which changes did you find out? The ones that.
Yes, uh, yes, if you're looking at that packet, most of those, so let me, uh, guide you on the screen to where the applicant's specific request. Sits within that proposal.
The tax for the amendment. As part of his proposal. Is this, is this staff comfortable with what he's proposed?
Yeah, his proposal actually just would insert a single line, so that's actually, he's justifying why it's important. He's not showing us what the ordinance wants changed. So let's actually, let's take one step back to answer your question. Commissioner Burden, and then we'll look at those others. In the staff report. One of the very first things that, uh, that is listed is, um. The section of code that would be changed if we left all the code the same, same and just go with the applicants asking in. Uh, which if you guys would rather do that, it's not skin off my back, it didn't take me much time to do the rest of stuff and we can bring that up another time. So conditional uses, this is in the S one zone, the S one zone has a list of conditional uses that are allowed. It would just be inserting agritourism as the, uh. Part of the agritourism as provided, provided compliance with kind of one-way chapter twenty-one. Just simple.
Actually not conditional uses when you look at the code. One of the thing I noticed.
One oh four ten.
That header is not correct.
Is it supposed to be ten four?
No, the conditional use label is not correct in the actual code.
Oh.
When I, I looked at that, it threw me off because it was not making sense.
That's sorry, let's have a look at that specifically.
I looked in the, well, that will be cool. I didn't send any notes.
We'll talk about it, yeah. You're right.
Impermanent.
Okay. So, you're right. Um, so it'd be this section of code here, so if we were to allow their requested change. Section one oh four dash ten dash three, conditional uses. Would have agritourism listed in there. As, as long as it's in compliance with the agritourism ordinance.
Yeah, so I saw that and I thought, I wonder Charlie's trying to put that in a permitted or the conditional labeled.
Condition, yeah, no condition. I'm not trying to trick you, I promise.
That's why I had questions about what it is changing. Not sure if you're trying to trick me.
So, in fact, if we, uh. Speaking of being tricky, let's go down to the staff post changes. If we, if you looked at what the staff proposed changes show. Um, we do list agritourism under the S one zone and we list it as a conditional use. Um, if you're gonna go with that. So just very briefly looking at staff proposed changes and bringing this section into compliance with the standards of other sections. I've got notes off to the side that kind of tell you why things are either changing or not changing the way they are. Um, for example, the S one zone doesn't list household pets as being allowed. But all the other, all the other zones that allow residences do. So everyone who lives in the shoreline zone, Trevor included, if you've got household pets, you're currently not in compliance with the code and all that Irish coming over.
In jail.
Knock on your door, take him to jail. I figured that's.
I want to use that, I want, I got all these household deer.
Call me in October.
Yeah.
I saw all my neighbors, they're really.
Now, in my opinion, having household pets in your land use code is kind of dumb. That's not a land use, you just, with your pets.
Right.
But because other codes specifically listed as allowed. And this one specifically doesn't list it, that means by default, it's not allowed in this zone, so. I'm trying to make adjustments to this code, this zone, to make it fall into compliance, so people can actually have household pets without. Make an iris mad at you. Um, keeping of animals and, and foul for family food production, that was the old convention of, of that term. Uh, if you look at the eighty-three zones, we just call it family food production accessory to a residential use.
Okay, so you've. Redlined out all these. All permitted uses in the S one and put these tables in there.
That's right.
Instead.
And my intention was to not change what is currently allowed in the shoreline zone, it was to. Just provide a convention, a standardized convention.
Everything you've redlined out. A through. L. Is now included in your table.
There are a couple of things that I include and then delete, so that you could see that I've included it, but deleted it. For example, boating. Boating is listed as a permitted use in the shoreline zone. Boating is not a land use. It's an activity, and so if you list boating as allowed in your shoreline zone. And you don't go into all of your other zones unless boating as a valid use, it is by default not allowed into any of the other zones. So the better thing for us to do is take boating out of the shoreline zone, not because we're not gonna allow boating, but because boating is an activity. Not a land use.
So you. You've written. Redlined out. Keeping of animals and foul for family food production.
That's right.
Only about your table.
I'll answer that, so I, I just answered that a couple of seconds ago, but the convention in the other sections. We've changed keeping of animals and foul to family food production accessory to a residential use. It's the same thing, we've just changed how we've stated it.
Just. Okay, excuse me, okay. I mean, if we're gonna get in the weeds. Like, lamping is an activity. Motor homing is an activity, not a land use.
Yep.
Same with boating.
But you're doing it on the land.
What's that?
It's an activity telling you park it.
Boating and then this boating is on the land. Might have the water, it's on the.
Same reason we don't put driving in here. Um, fishing I also take out because it's, it's a. You're right, there's a, there's a weird little balance, there's a.
Like recreational activities.
There's a gray.
It's like, well. Can't really have recreational activities in shoreline zone anymore, sorry guys.
There, there's definitely a gray area in there. If you were allowing boating. For profit, we would say you have a business and you need a land use permit for your business. We would say that. But if you're just boating, it's a nonprofit thing, that'd be an activity. If you were allowing people to come to your property and fish. At, for a fee, that would be an established use on your property and you'd be allowed just.
So the federal government had one for charging us to get on the lake.
Preemption, they preempt this. Yeah, better prevention. They get away, otherwise they would, yeah, they would have to have a permit, a commercial use permit for.
No, Arizona can tax them, why can't we?
Well, we do get, so we get pill payments, we get payment in lieu of taxes payments for federal land. That we're not otherwise getting taxes on, so they do pay us a little bit, but it's, it's not much. Um, so you'll see fishing is taken out, boating is taken out, not because we're not allowing them, but because it's not necessary to regulate those. Other than that.
Recreational activities. Cause technically, if it's not available, it's not in there, then it's not allowing. I think the same thing, so let's say it's not federal agreement, which now which controls that, and so basically we have no say.
Yeah.
Say it becomes a state park or whatever, and all of a sudden you follow the supplies.
If the recreational activity is a currently established use on the property, then yes, you would need a permit for that and it would need to be specifically listed in the code. Someone who's got a recreational outfitters operation, someone who, um. Uh, routinely takes people out on tours, uh, maybe they're snowing buildings, in those particular cases.
But like having a paddleboard on the back of your property, that would be considered a recreational activity.
If you're charging for it, if you're not charging for it, it would be considered an accessory use to whatever you're using the property.
Anyway, to cross your property line and go to pine do. It's not legal.
Yeah, and he's talking about. The federal government has talked about putting tents all the way around it, I don't know that they'll ever actually have the money to do that, but. They have mentioned that they want to make sure people know it's.
They have the money.
That they do have the money, boy, they could do so much more with that money.
I agree.
Question on one oh four ten five. So is the same minimum. Minimum for all uses, five acres, so that's different than that eighty-three.
Yep, that's, so the S one zone has a minimum five acre, so if you're gonna do any established, any kind of use on it, you have to have at least five acres. And the eighty-three is three acres.
So any.
From the Rangers came over.
Farming agritourism.
Suppose you got four point nine acres. You can't farm it, you could just.
Go look at it.
They said.
Why is that? Why would you want? Somebody to farm. Every bit of this.
We're not out there, we're not out there. That, that provision, but if you were asking for a permit to do something on the property, we. We wouldn't issue it, because you don't have the necessary.
So. That doesn't seem consistent with what we're saying about. Wanting to promote. Agriculture, if you're saying you can't, if you have four and a half acres. You can't grow a crop. Or a truck farm or whatever. But you can have people over and camp.
You could. Without, without five acres in the shoreline zone.
Here it says three to five.
Yeah, so that would be applicable, so three, five, anything less than five would be applicable if the zone allows less than five. The prevailing zoning requirement of five acres in the shoreline zone, that would still apply.
So if you want to promote farming, why not? Make that zone just like the EB three and allow farming. At the same, on the same type of land, so.
It's intended to be a different zone, so you're right, there are.
Right.
There are differences there.
Now's a good time to fix little things like this. You, you don't want to disincentivize people from farming.
In fact, I would suggest. If, if you, if you want to look at it that way, we can make the S one zone just rezone to the AB three zone, that would. That would increase density a little bit. Maybe we could.
I don't know why.
If you, the AB three zone allows one unit for three acres, the S one zone allows one unit for five acres, so if you've got multiple acres above. Five, you could potentially get more. It's not a huge increase, but it's a little increase.
So with this, could you? Modify? This to say, yeah, you could go down to three acres. And allow agritourism, but no logic.
Actually, yeah, yeah, we could certainly make that kind of change. It gets complicated when we do those specific one-offs. Um, but if you're, if you feel comfortable with that.
I think this is a lodging play. That's my observation.
Yeah.
And I think if this one isn't, the next one probably will be and.
Is there any, because I, I don't know, looking at these, maybe I missed it, but the clamping. I guess, could you do on three acres or less than five acres?
Have to have five acres to do, you have to have five acres in order to establish your agritourism operation. And so you wouldn't be able to do any of those uses in the S one zone unless you have five acres.
But bed and breakfasts you can.
No.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying as far as if you're trying to have a business and. Or rental type thing, if you do a bed and breakfast on.
Five acres are greater, yeah.
Plus three to five acres, right?
No, five. The shoreline zone, you can't go less than what the minimum lot size requirement is. So even though the code says three to five, if you've got two ordinances that seem to conflict, like one ordinance is more pervasive than the other one. The more restrictive applies.
Why don't you just take that out there?
Because there are others, um. Cause this applies to the eighty-three zone, which would allow three.
So what if you were to say in the shoreline zone, you can do agriculture. Down to three acres. But you can't do any. Lodging.
Yeah, in fact, we could do that, let's see, shoreline, let's get up here to shoreline here. Uh, where we've got agriculture listed right here, we could have a little special regulation off to the side that says. Um, lot size may be reduced to three acres, provided no lodging is associated with agritourism or something like that.
How much lodging you get with five acres?
One, one dwelling, unless you have an, unless you have an agritourism operation, in which case you could get more.
So dwelling and lodging, you're looking at the same thing, is that what you're referring to? No, the lodging would be in addition to the. Person who lives there.
True.
It'd be all of these various things based on how much land you have. So that, like, the piece of land in question here, how big is that?
Uh, I wanted to say this at ten acres or something like that, but. I could, I could look into that for you.
But it says it can't be located closer than five hundred feet to an existing town.
Where are you looking? Under, uh, agritourism. There you go. So as you can see, the agritourism does have additional standards and restrictions that would run with it that could help reduce some of the concerns. But it doesn't mean it'll reduce all of them. Um, I think you could potentially get like a farmhouse, uh, which would be an additional density right essentially. Uh, for your, as long as it's for your, um, farm workers. If you have an agritourism operation. So there are a few additional uses that just go off. Um, it may be worth discussing that the applicant initially asked. What we think the appetite of the planning commission would be to just rezone to the eighty-three zone, rezone that property to the eighty-three zone. Right now, it looks like it would make an eighty-three island, and so we would want to work with other landowners to rezone to the eighty-three as well.
Could create more density.
And it would create more density points. I don't know how many, we'd have to calculate that after we. How do we do it?
So.
Yeah.
Then, uh. I'm just saying. The, the unintended consequence. So, all right, the draft contract. You're focused on one deal. And something else is in there and you're not focused on it, and you should have been. It's, it's easy to do that. So. Yes, we have an applicant driven. An, an application saying, now, will you change it? But I'm looking at this, not just for this applicant, but the whole S one, I look at that whole peninsula. Yeah, it is eighty-three, why do we make it different? Than everything. Elsewhere in the valley, that looks like that is eighty-three, so how come? All these S one things out on that peninsula, that doesn't make sense.
I think the main thing was just the density in the shoreline area, that they wanted. A little higher. Density in the AB versus the shoreline. Just so you know, it has much. Impact, and also the subject systems in that area too. This, the health department has, remember that home we issued a. Um, finally, they got septic approval.
Wow. At the very end of Springtown?
Yeah, and that took. And they kept that more shoreline, yeah, because of the septic system.
Yeah, I guess the thing that. Okay. Let's dance if it's.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
There ought to be a way to write in here, okay, that applies to dwellings or hunting, but you can. Use the land, farm it.
Yeah, like, uh, crop production. Farming has a lot of different meanings, right? But if it's limited to crop production or something. I agree, and technically that's how we enforce now, I mean, we're not out there telling people.
No, but it is. Probably good to say, well, we don't.
Yeah. Yeah.
So people don't have to be. So people don't have to be hassled.
Farming too close to pine view causes more than nitrate and other bad things from. Proper farming into pine, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
It was a school.
Well, frankly, my understanding of the S one zone has changed after doing this full review. My understanding of of the S one zone was to provide water quality protection, um which farming can um conflict with that. Right. So can.
But that can be fixed.
Everything can be fixed. Everything can be regulated.
If a problem is created, then okay, you're polluting, you can't do that. And the conditional use permit is revoked. Because it would be issued based on. You're gonna mitigate any adverse consequences from you doing this permitted use. If you don't mitigate it. Then you can't do it anymore.
It doesn't already cause too many problems, you know, for example, we say you can farm, we say like we have the right, but. We say you can farm, they start putting nitrogen on the ground, it rains and that runs right into pine. All of a sudden, all the subjects and systems are banned because we allowed this.
See that big.
It can be fixed.
Big study that I kept that big file, someday I'm gonna donate it to the planning department to preserve it. They looked all over, they couldn't find any subject system, so we're fair on the whole Huntsville peninsula. Even though the zins are over a hundred years old. The only thing they could find is when the thunderstorms came. It would wash through the dairy farms where there's all that concentrated. And that would pick up the phosphates and nitrates and they'd go into the lake. Just run. And that was real concentrated, wasn't putting nitrogen on the field. Dairy. Where they're all on top of each other and feedlots. So if if somebody came in and said, I want to put a feedlot right next to the lake. That's sort of saying the fuck in my mind, okay, how are you gonna keep all this stuff we know goes into life when there's more towns? Some dairy farm, are you gonna keep that out of the way? The diapers under your cow.
County Commission allowed feedlots uh last year, new feed.
They were commercial feedlots.
Concentrated feedlots, yeah. And so in the way we define what a concentrated feedlot would. It's pretty much a feedlot, if as long as it's an agrarian, if it's pasteurizing animals. Uh of a a certain density per acre, it's not a feedlot, it'd just be pasteurizing.
I think if I remember that, if you have like ten cows on ten acres. You could still corral them, beat them.
Yes, you're right.
Do it just.
You're right.
Just what he's talking about is problem.
You're right.
Talked about that in the winter, they can come in and you can beat them by your barn in the winter.
I would agree that there's. You know, shouldn't dwell too much on this one in particular site, but this is the only site we have, so. Let's say this gets approved in some manner and they come with a conditional use application and I discounted fourteen adjacent properties. A vehicle would pass before they get to the site. So you have. The hearing for that. It has to be hearing, right?
It would be a, not a hearing, but you could have comment on that, yes.
And out of fourteen, let's say eight say, gosh, I don't want that at the end of my dead end street. And what do you do? Say no, because the neighbors don't want it, so you've allowed it. Here it's in a somewhat residential area and the res, you know, logically, probably a lot of the neighbors aren't going to want. Traffic flow.
So there's a problem with that, and that is, once it becomes a zone, they come in and prove that they can do it. We can't, we have a comment, doesn't matter.
Correct. That's where clamor.
Checks the boxes of, you know, the fire department saying that it's safe. They've got parking, they made all the criteria.
The neighbors are saying, hey, the night, the road. Yeah, traffic is.
So.
Changing the.
One of the conditional use standards is will the use materially degrade the level of service of the street? Can almost guarantee that street's probably level service A, and if there's a traffic study that can prove that it. Goes from an A to a B, we could say it's degraded that level of service. I I don't think you'll see that kind of traffic going to this property, but. It's, there's a potential there.
This exact thing. Hey, favor. This exact thing came before us with the county shed thing.
Yeah.
Having just very narrow road and they wanted to bring in motor homes and traders and. There was no room to turn around and they would be blocking the neighbors, there's just no room on that road. I think we denied the conditional use of it, recommended denial based on, there's no way they can mitigate that traffic problem that they're creating.
Did they appeal it, Mike?
No. They didn't.
And that one, yeah, that one, I think that was probably a good decision to make because it was a like a wedding venue or a event center or something like that.
Yeah.
And I don't know that they specified how many people would be there at any one time, but when a big event's happening, you might have car after car after car, which brings that little service of that straight down to a. D or an F in those moments.
Might be a hundred guests there. Fifty or anyway, well, that could happen here if someone's gonna run a monthly farm to table dinner for fifty people.
It could.
Yeah, see, that's. If if you say, okay, you can do agritourism in an S one zone, just like you can do that wedding thing in an eighty three zone. Okay, that covers the whole thing, you can do it. It's a conditional use permit, but when you want to do something, you gotta come in. And we look at all those detrimental things that might occur and can you mitigate them? You mitigate the sewage, that was one of the issues up there. We decided it had to be health department.
Yeah.
Regulated. The traffic was the thing that killed it and I don't remember the fire department. So so whenever an application comes, if if we make a change, recommend this change to the S one. Whenever an application comes, that's the time you grill down and say, okay, it makes sense to do it here.
Well, this be done here, yeah. In that case, it might be too late, but.
Well, it would be subject to. You have to mitigate any harm that it's gonna do to you. They may not like it, they may like it, but if you can't mitigate it, you can't do it.
You know, for example. This this parcel, who's gonna pay for this traffic state, right? I mean, that's, that's the hard part, is we can't stop it without a traffic study and no one's gonna pay for it.
So I guess based on everything I've heard, thinking through the unintended consequences of the sensitive nature of the lands, the watershed around pine view. Personally, I don't think I could support. What this applicant was asking for at this time, knowing what I know. That's just my takeaway from this conversation so far. I think there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of knowns with respect to the sensitivity of that watershed. There is not a thriving agritourism business in Valley anyway, so it's not like. Oh my God, it's going to be a windfall and the way to save the family farm, that's just not happening. Uh I saw a pumpkin thing, I live out by there and I thought that was fine, but there was a lot of traffic out there. If that was a residential area, people would freaked out during that month or so. So I I don't think I can support.
What's the flavor here? Has to have planning commission so we can move on? I would certainly support making this change. Full heartedly, because we have an opportunity in the future to look at each application and it's so much like the A B three.
So you say you weren't supportive?
I am in support of adding agritourism to the S one.
I'm gonna say I'm probably opposed to it, simply because. They can still come and ask for a a conditional use permit anyways if they want to do something like clapping or. If I'm a wedding or something on there, yeah, if you're in an A B three, yeah.
Yeah, but if you're in S one, you can't.
For S one, that's right. That's where I was confused.
Yeah.
I I think I could get on board, I don't, it's not like you can put a whole kale over there. I think clearing up a few of those things that were in the. We have to have a public hearing on it, so I think we need to know why they didn't do it originally.
Why they didn't?
Why they didn't put it in there originally?
Oh, okay.
You know, is it pollution, one of those? We have to have public hearing. I agree with a lot of it to come, because now's the only time we have, right? Because conditional, it's it's about what if, I mean. Draper, the the contractor said, I can do this, see, here's the truth, and here we are now, so. Granted, that might be an outlier, and it is, of course, but. And so there's some concerns, I don't know exactly where I fit, all right, I I agree that, you know. If there were farming operations going on and someone was looking to make this change, then it makes sense, but. I'm not seeing that, I I know it's proactive to do this. I I view this as a proactive thing, it's like, oh, well. If those guys ever wanted to do something, well, nobody, nobody who, as far as I'm aware, is doing actual agricultural. Operations has requested it from the shoreline. But maybe they don't know they can too, and so you get one person, you set up an operation, then their neighbor gonna be like, hey, maybe I can do that, and next thing you know, it blows up. That's that was my biggest.
So it blows up, if agritourism is gonna blow up. I'm just guessing, because I don't remember. You got this much J V three where you can do it already.
That is not acceptable. You're not gonna go, you're probably not gonna go to Derek's house to go glamping, I mean, maybe, I kinda wanna go there. Because that's my own style, but this is on the lake, right? They're gonna have a boat right there. You can have a boat on the water. I understand that, but you could still have a boat in the water. People do it all the time, so you're not, unless somebody's enforcing it, it's gonna happen regardless.
See, that's why. You can be a half a mile away from the lake and you're in year's one. You can't even see them.
But, yeah.
Your your blocks away from the lake, the way that F one is drawing them to make some.
I've I've walked that quite a bit and it's it's not that bad, like it's not that far away. But but you look at that map, I mean, there's there's quite a few farming operations there, and most of them are just private operations that don't really. The only one I can think of that I know of in there that's a farm operation that wants to do that is that sunny field that I wanted to do. It's really the only one that I'm, they might want to jump all over this. The other ones, I would be surprised they could do it, I don't know, it would shock me, but. Sunnyfield, like I say, is the only one that's actively trying to put out a store and do that kind of thing. The rest of them are just farming, so maybe they want to do it, but they haven't come and asked for it, or even tried to do it. What's that? But they they could have started doing it without approval, right? And I don't know of anybody that has. So, like I say, I'm on the fence, but if you if you want to get that information as to why. I think there's definite concerns and maybe the maybe the public has better input that we're not seeing, so we'll just, we'll move on.
That's a nice one right here. This is part of heritage and snow, they've got houses in it and they're farming, that's part of the Hinkley farm. So that's sure an agricultural thing. I'm I'm talking about if you're up here. That's S one, that is way far away from there.
Well, it's got that cove right there. When you walk around there, that's a cove all through there. That that's right next to the lot closer than it looks on that map.
Anyway.
Does that whole, that whole peninsula, like where this is at, all of those are development lots that are like, that are already been sold, that one's Scott, so we're just playing. Most of our. Anyway. Um we we can talk about it more, but um definitely, let's find out why and then we'll just go from there.
Definitely do that. One thing uh on administrative items that I just wanted to visit with you guys about. Um I was chatting with legal and they're not. Gonna be able to send a legal representative to on these meetings just because of how long they've been going. Um timewise, and so, and I said, we really don't need a legal representative to have like sessions, so that's why, you know, there's one session, you have to see. Uh a legal right here, um planning and Chris guy who's over. You guys know more about land use law than we do, so you're gonna totally fine with having our staff here. Um it's in our meetings, our actual meetings, we're probably gonna have a legal staff there for administrative items. But when we get to legislative items, if it's not real controversial, we may not, or we may have a legal staff. What's the logic here? They just don't have the time and the resources because.
But we have to donate our time and resources. I don't know that I need him, but it's like, oh, we have to be here for free, and no, he's not here for free. And that resource, he needs to come on.
We donate on both sides. Yeah, he, they just, they've said they can't, and so I I'm trying to be respectful of it and and understand, you know, when. You know, their staff's here for eight hours and then they're here for another. Yeah, and so, you know, if there's some way we can make our meeting something more efficient. Um I just wanted to throw that out, first my ideas with you guys on how we can maybe. Complimentate that, I know we've tried to get our staff reports out to you um on the timeline, and I feel like we've done that. Um quite well, the last few meetings. So. And we've started with things, I just told you when we, when we were having a board. That was to have off these things along too. Well, and a lot of the reasons for some of that.
Do some action on because they were, and it's some of the bigger items, I think you could. The the reason I'm saying that is like people, like we know people are gonna be coming to a meeting this year, that people might be coming to a meeting, we should get going. Yeah, because the last meeting, people were. We knew which one, I guess, were more popular about people who show, we already told that way or.
Rick, do you have an idea into the future? I know some things are reactive to when they come in the door, but. Things that will be from the board's commission over the next six months. That are not applicant driven in a particular.
We do have a few of those items, but they're always legislated and those we hold off, I mean, there was someone could have put on this agenda, this last agenda, but worse. There's nothing, we weren't gonna put on there that was county driven onto that agenda. But there was a few things that we needed to put on there in order to look at approving some of those rezones, which was those two ordinances, you may recall. And I chatted with Trevor before and uh we switched things around, so the bills were first. And then we had the, and the reason, and I think everything worked really well on the last meeting.
We 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 thought that more people would be for the other item and there was more people for the first one, I guess, more people, so there we go.
Well, and there was some different people showed up in general. Yeah, I was, I was just like, okay, we're making a big deal out of it, what? Because hardly any of the public even showed up.
And maybe part of it is, is it's so much, like this is not like, so that's kind of the other goes into this, it's like, oh, you know, legal thinks this is too much and it's a lot of work. Well, it is, what is the packet like, what was it, a couple a hundred pages or something?
Two hundred.
Two hundred pages, and we're supposed to review every bit of that and make changes and do it all, right?
You're not used to.
It's, it's a lot.
Looking at red lines, if your eye doesn't understand.
Tutively get the red. Really hard to look at.
Oh, yeah.
Would you rather see? I mean, I I hate to kill more trees, but. We used to do red line and black line. It's nice to have the red line, just so you know what we're not changing, because sometimes we get hyper focused on something that might be a problem in the code that we're not suggesting we touch, because it could be a landmine to try and touch. So it's nice to see both those, but. Uh, we can produce black lines as well.
I think what you're doing is the right way. We've been around this already once. I think you used to do it differently, and we were all kind of, I remember, but I was kind of lost in what changes have made.
I'm glad this.
Having changes. Layering edge is the way.
Okay.
Um. But, yeah, I mean, speaking to it, it's like. Well, this is a lot. Do we want to do it or not? Because that that's really more the question of of obviously productivity, but how are we going to get through it when? We all have jobs or things we need to be doing. And we got to somehow learn all of this. I know you guys get it because you're here all day and wrote it. So. And we have to somewhat understand it. It takes a lot, so. I mean. Yeah, we need to try and be more efficient, but two hundred pages with all changes throughout is. No small feat.
Mm hmm.
Sorry that legal can't sit through that, but that's. I mean.
Yeah, I guess. I just thought about there. They approached me, and so I just always wanted to be upfront with you guys to help you know, you know, what their concerns were, so.
Because we don't want to be here either, but at the end of the day, we're trying to do, we're we're either gonna do it or we're not, right? And we're gonna do it, we gotta try and do it right.
To be.
So. That's, I mean, I'm sorry if we we stay late. Goal is to hear the people, hear hear the comments, and everybody's looking squad stat. You can do that quicker than we'll try and do it quicker.
Yeah, so. I'm a guy that talks a lot, my apologies. But. All right, lastly, I was trying to. Draw a picture for the public. And and maybe this could be drawn for them before. And I'm picturing a timeline. And anyway, we're talking about zones. You cannot build a house. Don't talk to us with your comments about, I don't want them to build a house, because no house can be built. They get the zone. And then we have to separate them, and then we do your building. And then it's been done, and then they're building. So all that stuff you want to talk to us about tonight. That has to be later.
Hmm.
I'm thinking of, you know, when we download something, we got this little thing that goes down, a little line that goes across. If if there could be a visual that could be with a pack of some sort of public can see. We are just.
Where we're at.
Where we're at. We're we're up here.
Yeah.
At the very. Beginning.
Yeah.
And so. I I know. I I hear rumors that go around up there when these things come up, like last meeting. Oh, they're gonna allow hotels, sixty story have hotels in the middle of Eden. Well, I don't think so. I I don't think. I mean, that's all we're talking about, a sixty story hotel we're talking about. This guy wants to do zone change to something to zone that exists already, so.
People thought there there was an intent to increase. Not look at. Adjusting it. So, yeah, people have. All sorts of effects. Well, let's get that.
That was good. Do you want me to? This is what this meeting is for. You're welcome to come and comment, but we're not talking about. Three years from now, and some guy makes an application.
Well, that one really was a hotel, so there was a lot of reason for confusion, because it could be.
The Old Town meeting. See, I missed two meetings and all.
Right? I mean, that commercial zone could be a hotel.
Hmm, there's a possibility.
You could put as many density rights as you want within the the building height, so they were absolutely right that they could put a hotel there. And there's no need to apply for it once it's in his own.
So what needs to be done?
Other than.
They would propose the original.
Was in there at fifty feet.
Yeah, and then it went down to two stories or thirty five feet, I think, along the street. And then we stepped it back.
Twenty five feet on the street.
Thirty five. Thirty five. I I was, that's what I opposed. I wanted it to be twenty five.
There's two stories on the street.
Mm hmm.
Essentially works out to three. Yeah.
So.
Anyway.
Yeah. They had every right to be.
But I heard. Sixteen story. Yeah.
That was a sixty foot building.
I caught a fish once, one time that was this big. I had early is, uh, I think it's.
Object of life.
Anyway, that's.
I appreciate. We'll we'll move right along.
Move right along.
Last item discussed, we consider an initiated tax amendment to the form based zone. To provide for a future development intended to be called Eden Crossing and to provide slated street connections. Through the architecture design standards to develop.
Great, and we have the applicant here. Um, Eric, if you want to. Want to set the tables? Um. So. Actually, definitely. Yeah, another Eric, but they're working together.
He had a conflict.
So the. Uh, picture you have on the screen. Is the current street regulating plan of um, Newtown. Uh, next one over, uh, sorry. Good next one. Um. It's six. Yeah, page six of that. So what you see, just I want to make sure we're all super comfortable and familiar with what is already in place. As you're gonna see some various proposals for changes. Um. Junior High School is here. Luckily, those storage units were approved for here, haven't been built yet. Um, county sheds. In fact, I think you can see piles. And the county shed yard. Um, this is a dead end road that is currently manufacturing and be uh, the empty one zone. From here down to actually from here up to here. And then down to here, this is all zone CB two, Commercial Valley two right now.
Where are the existing storage? Units in that zone?
On this corner right here.
Okay.
Maverick is this guy here, post office, uh, is it Eats of Eden, I think is here. Um, Bell Market, um, those cabins, so just to give you an orientation of where we are.
Are there structures currently on any of those solid or dotted roads?
Uh, on the solid roads, the dotted roads are roads that don't exist yet, but the solid roads.
Do those dotted roads go through existing structures in any way?
Um, we I tried to avoid them as much as we could. In fact, you see the jog that's right up here. This road would actually, if that run is continuing, it takes the driveway that goes to the um, uh. Restaurant, thank you, and then cuts around that same drive. So the the restaurant is kind of a, has has an angle here, cuts around that. So the restaurant, if that road was built. Would have uh, would be right at the street level if, you know, they let that road be built, and then it drops down. So I tried my best not to go through buildings. Uh, that's not to say none of the lines go through buildings. It's not intended to be survey level accuracy either. So if you see something going through a building, imagine it may move to.
Not go through the.
Yeah, a couple hundred feet in one direction or the other, so it wasn't. Okay, um. So most of this from the Eden four way intersection in that direction. Um, is zoned either MV Manufacturing Valley or CB uh, Commercial Valley. Um. The. Uh, Golden West built this tiny section of road right here, but then it ends. This tiny section of road is a county road or will be a county road. It's dedicated to the county, and we've got an agreement with Golden West that they will operate and maintain it until this road is completed. And then if you see the shit, the hill shade. This is where the land kind of drops off and goes down to that heading that somebody mentioned earlier. Down this area here. So as you're coming up Highway fifty eight, you're going up the hill. Now you're on top of the hill, going towards the four way intersection and then up towards, I don't know. That's what you currently have adopted. The magenta, just as a reminder, is mixed, or sorry, uh, vehicle oriented commercials. So we're talking. Drive through restaurants, grocery stores, things that people need their car uh, in order to get to and get out of. Um, the red is mixed use commercial, which is uh, street oriented retail operations at the street level. Um, with the potential of other commercial operations above or behind or residential uh, residential units up above or behind. Um, the orange color. Is multifamily, which can have commercial at the street level if they want it. Otherwise, it's just multifamily uh, buildings. The kind of bluish color here, that is intended to be government institutional, which is everything that vehicle oriented is, plus. If it's a governmental institutional building, they don't have to follow all the same rules, basically. So if, you know, maybe even incorporates and there's a civic center that goes, you know, in here somewhere, that was kind of the idea. When I put these lines on the map, I didn't put it on the map with the hill shade. Uh, and so I have. Laid it on a hill shaped map. This is actually the version that you guys saw in last week's meeting. Um. Not changing any of the lines from what was originally adopted a year and a half ago, just showing it with. It it in in respect to where it's um, geography is. Um, I got looking at this and I thought a little bit more. The applicant's uh, proposal is up in this area over here. Uh, and before we dive too deep into what their proposal is. Let's go to the history of this area, this being the lighter green being uh, single family, one acre. And because it's a three acre zone right now, it would require transfers to make those one acre lots, just like we saw for the the sunny field transfer into uh, the heat Mary over here. And then this darker green is a sleep lot, which is three acre, which I'm probably not a lot of motivation for most people who are colored this to even go to the porn base zone, because they're already in a three acre zone. And then the light green is open space. So applicant has this property right here. When I put this map together initially, not only did I not do it with the hill shade. Um, so I I could, it was hard to see where the topographic features were. I also did it in a way that I thought would have the path of least resistance. Um, it was important, I think, to get the uh, form base code adopted. We had a steering committee for the Old Town Eden area. We did not have a steering committee for this area here. And so I thought it would probably not benefit anybody if I showed a whole bunch of commercial over on this property here. I didn't know who owned it, and I didn't want to see pitchforks and torches at that particular. It was just easier to kind of have, if this is the center of town, have town be offset in that direction. Now we have an applicant who's asking for something here, and so we got a debate. Is that the right thing to do? Well, some of the proposals you look at show this area here and some of this area here with either removed. Development intensity or changed development intensity. It's important that you guys know the applicant is only talking about this property right here. But I have asked the applicant to come to the county and say, hey. This is where our streets are, we want our streets to be laid out, and this is how we think our streets can tie into other streets in the. Can you form base uh, street regulating plan? And so I'll show you what those are as well in just a moment. So there was really no. Um. Master Rhyme or Reason. To the uh, the coloring of the roads other than what's currently there, what's currently zoned to be allowed. Um, and uh, how can we help get this adopted without creating a big uh, negative ripple on it? Okay, I wanted to make sure that was pretty clear. As you look at the different proposals. I just got a little slideshow up here for you. See the. The darker lines that I just added over there. Those are the. Approximate locations of the roads that the applicant would like to. The applicants looking at mixed use commercial. Um. A little bit of vehicle oriented commercial, I think, and then uh, multifamily and then single family or uh. Sorry, small lot residential, which would allow up to four residences per lot.
Or what what what's a lot?
Uh, as small as three thousand square.
Wait, so four residences per three thousand square feet?
If you feel like you could fit four on three thousand square feet, yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're they'd probably be be pretty small residences, but you might be able to get a fourplex or some town homes, just depending on how you can make it to three thousand foot. Um, parcel. I think most of the time we'll see more than three thousand, we're talking about multiple residences. Um, okay, so the next slide I'm gonna show, as these streets kind of brought tied into the rest of the street regulating plans. But you could see how the areas to the west have changed a little. And and I've given you three different alternatives plus a four, which is just do nothing, change nothing. Um, so. One. Two. And three. Again, with these, I'm the the principles I'm operating under is that. First off, the center of town is the intersection, which we hope to have a roundabout on. And then as you, that's the most intense part of the that town, and then as you expand out from the center of town, the intensity decreases until you get down to three acre lots outward. As you could see over this corner, that is the start of Old Town. Eat as well. Um, and so. You can only go out so far and reduce intensities before you're going back up again as you get into Old Town. I think at some point in the future, you might see those two merge, but that's. Not the proposal right now. The proposal right now is essentially to look at this northeast quadrant. And see how could we potentially, that's the applicants asking. How could we potentially accommodate what the applicant is asking without creating? Uh, a level of intensity or a a difference in intensity of that uh, village that wouldn't be. Um, appetizing for the community to to take off. This is a legislative action. It's the very beginning of the legislative action, so um, we'll have to have a public hearing eventually. Loop the uh, uh, the public in on all of that, and it'll come before you guys. Uh, for a full decision.
Where are your patriots?
Patriots? Where are they?
Where are they?
Oh, uh, sorry, part. Sorry, yeah, there's a, there's a legend. Maybe I didn't include it in here.
So Charlie, just a thought. Because you didn't have the opportunity to have any for this particular. Form base village zone.
Hmm.
Wouldn't it make sense to do that?
We've talked about.
Any bias of anything, any projects coming on or anything like that, and so. Establish the boundaries and then just say that's what it is, and then that that would be my opinion.
So I I think I wrote about it a little bit in the staff report, and again, this is not by any means a final staff report, just to get you guys at least the initial information. Um. We. Uh, we uh, addressed that with the county commission when we created this particular street regulating plan. We told them, first off. We were in Old Town Eden and exclusively working on Old Town Eden. They liked it so much that they said, do Newtown. And they said, we worked with the steering committee on Old Town. He wants to do that with this one, and they said, use the planning commission for that. So I think they were interested in getting it adopted uh, a little faster than it would have been if we worked for an entire year with the steering committee, which is about the time it took. Uh, working with steering committee for Old Town. Uh, and so now I think we're here kind of doing the same thing, but if you would like us to go back to the commission and ask them. This one is bigger. Different. Yeah.
First of all, who? Are those dedicated parks?
Um, not not yet. So none of this applies to any property until it's reasoned. So. This property right here isn't a park until someone who owns that property resounds to the form base zone. Why would they do that if it means they have to have now have a park? Maybe they've got property next door that allows them to do something about, you know, with the curbs.
So that probably is not owned by the park district at this time.
Not yet.
It's privately.
That's right.
So. Maybe it helps if you just had concept plans.
That's what this is.
But. Concept plan would be somewhere in here, there's gonna be some park.
Hmm.
They don't have to be right here.
Fair enough. Sure, yeah, and in fact, it doesn't have to be. Oops, doesn't have to be this square. Maybe it's that square or that square or that square or that square. So, yeah, that's that's a fair statement. Um, the idea behind having a park somewhere in town is that your center of town should be focused on a public space, a public plaza, a park space, something like that. Um, you've got Old Town, which already naturally has it, Liberty will naturally have it, but some of these other areas don't.
Well, I mean. You you talked about that river corridor thing of park.
Hmm. And maybe that's it.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Yeah, and that was kind of one of the thoughts back. On our current proposal of looking at something to this extent, allowing commercial to go down this hill. And then multifamily come in here so they can kind of take advantage of that riverfront without being right on the the river.
So do you intend in this Newtown thing to? Have architectural standards, let's be nineteen, let's see, we've got to go from nineteen ten. Forward or backwards, or it's all gonna be eighteen, maybe the nineteen ten.
So we've already adopted architectural standards for this Newtown Eden area, and that's agreed. So that's already good. The applicant is actually asking for different architectural standards, so.
Uh, another option.
Another option, yeah, not different, another option. So let's actually, let's get to that, and then we'll come back to the. Another option, yeah, not different, another option. So let's actually, let's get to that, and then we'll come back to these maps and talk about lines on the map. So these are, uh, the applicant is looking at Mountain Modern. Um, they've got their own interpretation of what Mountain Modern is, which is too far off from what the resorts are saying Mountain Modern is. Um, these little, uh, probably hard for you guys to read, but the yellow language, we've got. Um decorative kickers that hold up the uh the shed roof that goes over, we got exposed roof raptor tails, prominent decks that stick out. On a porches that cover uh entryways, um stone base, um wood siding. So the these are. Ways that these buildings comply, and you can see the variety of architecture of those two buildings.
So why do we care what they look like?
Yeah, it's just part of the.
No, but why is it, why is it part of the format? Where's the health, safety and welfare on the way to things?
Um, uh, welfare, there's quite a, quite a few studies in welfare, and I think we've talked about this in the.
Why don't you leave this flexible? So the developers can come in and. This applicant likes his kind, some other applicant over there is gonna like something else.
What you could see happening right now is this applicant is coming in and saying, you like this time? And we're suggesting, well, maybe you can match them up. Another applicant comes in and says, we like this other time, and that gives you guys the opportunity to say.
Cause if you have, if you have old town themes, even if. It's not regulated now, and we have old town themes and old town, right? So they've already started building between the general store, the blacksmith shop. They've already started building. Let's say that whole string gets, they let's say that whole thing gets built out of one lock. Then somebody comes in and builds something totally out of place. The idea is to protect. The welfare or the well being of those other landowners who've spent the money to build a more. Eye appeasing, or however you wanna put it, view to make it so that they all have to kind of be consistent. That's the idea.
And Commissioner Burton, whether it's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, policy wise, the county commission has already said this is the way we want to do it.
Okay. So a private guy came in and did Old Town. He did his blacksmith shop and the general store been there forever. And now it's fine. They didn't have anybody tell them they had to do that. They just did it. And then all of a sudden, government jumped in and said, oh, we're gonna make everybody do this. No matter what he wants to do.
I think that the group that they got together said that, which was the group of landlords.
They had a few people. Anyway, this image much bigger area. When you get something that. All looks uniform, we've seen separately, they're all the same. Those are the first things to go south. Because people get tired of it. And it's no longer in style, but we made them all look this way.
Well, that you're talking about a trap home development. This, this would be a large zone with multiple developers, builders, various architects. Who all, so there wouldn't be. You know. One absolute look, it would have a general motif. He's proposing a second motif. But they all wouldn't be. Want the same design. There's still a lot of change to each owner, landowner, and each developer would have within that design motif. The same down in. In Old Town. Not every building is like what you're saying, they're all gonna look like. But they're gonna have that. Time period. Feel, I guess, right, Charlie, that's what, that's what you're looking for, a time period, genre appeal in.
Old Town was time period, yeah.
This is more. A general architectural motif, right?
Right, that's right, that's exactly right.
So the idea is if you, if you, they, it's just. I don't, and it's, you you scrolled through it, there's different variations of what people could do. But the idea, and I I get your point, is trying to let it people do what they wanna do, but the hard part is. You've got, say, say that everybody builds out Old Town, cause we're talking, cause that one's an easy example, but they. And there's one lot that house in between the blacksmith and. The whatever that goes down. Person comes in, they go, man, this is a hot cop in place, there's people all over. I'm gonna tear the house down to put up a metal siding building because I have no requirements. Well, that's not really fair to the others that have spent lots of money, made it right, and then have an eyesore in the middle of town for planning. Regardless of what the guy wants to do. So that's, it's somewhat of a protection. I get that it's somewhat controlling.
Think a good case example of that, take a drive down Main Street in Morgan City. Um, you could see the buildings that somebody puts some effort into versus the buildings that uh. Were essentially prefab metal buildings that they put lipstick on a dig on those, and it it causes a pretty dramatic effect on the way that that. Community looks.
I think that's the goal, is to prevent that. Now, it's not, I think the goal, I think. I, you're right, it's somewhat restrictive and the it's, that's kind of the goal is to. Say, hey, come and give us an idea of what you're gonna look like, so it looks somewhat like this, and if you have any changes, we'll at least talk about it, so it's close. That causes some more headache, but it might prevent a problem.
Well, my suggestion is make it as. Flexible as possible. Not restricted, you make it more flexible, then people can then come up with great architectures and do great things because. Their dollars are on the line.
So do you think? All of those. Apartment buildings that are being thrown up around Ogden that generally all kind of look the same. Are those great looking buildings? Does that, is that additive, or does it matter in a? Community that.
There's another example we have in town. I mean, look at the, so the the where the car shop was, Sterling. Got a full brick building, it's rather nice. And saw, and across the street, you've got a brick center block. Storage shed, and everybody says, look at those ugly storage sheds, and so. They say that, I mean. Yeah.
Somebody says this.
So I think that's the intention here is to try and prevent that.
Where I'm coming from is, I don't know if anybody's driven around the streets to harass someone about Adams. Twenty and Street over the thirty street up here. Every house is a little bit different. And I got a book on it, wow, these are the elements, the architectural, this came from Greece, this came from Rome, they're all. It's really interesting out there. They're old, but they're interesting, they're not the same. And that's what I'm suggesting. Don't make people do something that is all the same. They're at risk, let them get their architect and come up with something. That may be different. That it may be very nice.
It's, we need to have the teeth, because like, like the storage units that went in, we couldn't really say no. And that's the unfortunate part, so, so, but yeah, here's where he's proposing something different from what's in there, and we can go. Looks about, looks good, your vision is good.
But we're, we're making our subjective decision on just subjective, oh, I like this, I don't like that. The hard part is like those homes, but to say. Okay. Your metal siding and. Okay. There's some materials that should be included and should be.
I I don't like it either, cause like, so for example, I've got a beautiful bit house next to me and next full side to me. But I want it to look beautiful, or just a big metal building to play basketball in. But it's not really fair to the neighbors to put that up. And that's, that's kind of the point here, so I. I agree with you that it would be nice to. Let people do, but the reality is one building costs twenty thousand dollars and one costs two hundred thousand dollars and. People are gonna be very in their decisions. The other thing is, is they're gonna be buying into this zone, so they're gonna know what the regulations are if they purchase or wanna build something there anyways. They don't have to build it. They're gonna buy into this area and they're gonna say, we know what the regulations are, so we're either gonna buy it, or we can make it work.
The temptation is. Part of restrict, restrict, restrict. And we've got a name for every architectural house there. Give people the flexibility. To do real things. That you may not have thought of.
I think what, I think this is kind of a hybrid between, like Park City is an extreme, right? Park City has super. Super heavy. Comments and saying you have to do this, and that's why all of Park City looks the same, right? I think there could be a little bit of a happy medium and say, yeah, you could, maybe, maybe it's a materials thing or something, make it, but you don't wanna. You don't want Chinatown and downtown Eden, and you don't want a modern building right next to it though. You have to draw the line somewhere, that would just be a disaster. I'm, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with those things, I'm just saying that to have some continuity.
Real neighborhood on Twenty Seventh Street. And right on the corner of Taylor and. Twenty Seventh Street. Deco, the Dan Logan High School is our deco.
Right?
Municipal building, dark deco, for security bank and the Echoes building. They're different. But. They're great. So. Just avoid the temptation to restrict, restrict, restrict. To. Subjective concepts, give people the freedom to come in with great ideas. And I don't know the answer of how you. Yeah.
I do like the idea of giving people the freedom to come in with great ideas. Um, what you're looking at is the idea that the applicant is. Yeah.
Now, I think the. Idea of great ideas is great. What's more risky for a small community? Like Eden. In this village in particular are bad ideas, and people who just wanna throw it up cheap. Make as much as they can quickly and then. Move on. That's the risk in this. Community, and I've seen that in other smaller, tighter mountain communities where. One really bad ugly building, done poorly, done cheaply. Spoils it for the rest of the neighborhood, and that would be my concern here. And I mentioned those apartment buildings. All over Ogden, they're essentially boxes, and they throw a few little elements here and there, and the really cheap ugly ones. And fewer and fewer. But if you look at those renderings that were up there. You know, those renderings are kind of like these boxes built in Ogden, they just have nicer. Treatments in certain areas, so go back to the one before that. This one else. One that was just more of a rectangle, there you go, one on the right. So you, you pull off a few of those little. Nicer uh treatments, and then you have one of those boxes sitting down in Ogden all over the place. And. The reality is, there's not much difference between the two. That looks nice. The ones in Ogden don't look nice. And so, you know, you still have that risk, even though you have a design motif that you're trying to achieve.
I do think we will find people who will wanna do it as cheap as possible, which is fine.
That's not necessarily, it's going to. Look terrible in the neighborhood, I don't think that's fine, by my eye.
No, I, I agree with you. Um, so I, I think they're gonna try and do it as cheaply as possible, and these are little things. And it's only eight standards, little things that help uh them not look terrible.
I drive up to. By the mountain, let me see, those aren't cheap, boom, that there.
So, um, anyway, but. I think we get the general premise of what. Kind of looking at here, just, I know, keep you on some land over there. Do you guys have any comments?
Please, it's gonna be that ugly place, right? Beautiful, big building there and a big store, right, right. You know, um. My one, am I getting? I don't change, you know, can I stop and cow there and? Step, how about that work, I just wanted. Sounds like you don't want any. You know, original farmer in this area.
Well, so. That's a great concern. Um, so as the process, I guess, speaking of the process and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, nobody is in this.
Yeah.
And albeit, at some direction, the commissioners. Planning department has spent a lot of time on this, like a lot of time and money and efforts and resources. Whether it's right or not, I don't know, but uh, um, you know, that's one of Charlie mentioned. I drew lines and made this just so we could get it pushed through. I pushed it easy so it would pass. Now. And now's the time, right? There's public hearings and whatnot, whether or not this is what it should look like, whether it should go or whether it should not. But you're, you, you do not have to rezone to this. And neither do any of your neighbors. You would have the ability and the right to, like, you could put a petition for it. But as of right now, this, you wouldn't, they're not talking about just rezoning. So you could, nothing would change, you'd have that.
I mean, I'm just saying, I got a pile of account that's inside the building there, right, in the middle of store and. And this, that, you know. And and there's gonna be departments or whatever here, they're gonna be. And I'm just wondering.
But that would be their choice to either. Develop next to you or not. Well, but that's their choice, they know what's there.
Yeah.
Right?
So you, there is a right to farm um in the agricultural zone which you're in, and you continue to have that right until you.
You have, you would have to actually apply for the farm based zone.
I'm just saying, I'm gonna be that. They like that, they, I, you don't know how many people say, what a shame they just ordered this barn down, or what a shame. At my camp, you know, and and they want that, you know, and it's. I just hate to see. You know, where you're saying all these buildings need to be the same, that's one man's dream, that's not necessarily the people in Eden. You know, that's one guy's looking, you know, like, oh, I want everything to be the same. I looked at the Old Town Eden last time, I was like, oh, what a sad. But I was glad to hear your comment of of how the software is gonna get through there, you know? I, I love that comment, so. Just, just keep that, that in mind.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, please do. So, first off, I, I met Charlie some time ago, about a month and a half ago, because. I have land directly across this composed new development. And I wanna find out myself what would form base look for me, and the potential to put. You know, storefronts or condos or whatever, and I learned a tremendous amount about TBRs. But for me, I I kind of find it interesting that. We want more open space. So the land directly across was thirteen acre, it was an open farm. These farms been in their family over a hundred years, that barn was a hundred and twelve years old, was torn down. Is the plan eventually to to connect. I call it post office Eden. And Old Town Eden. With one developer's dream of thinking this is Sun Valley. And I want this to be the center of Eden. That's one guy. It's not the community, but. Velvet. One acre, right, one acre, I think there's a pony. Why don't we just focus on the. The development side and put it over. On the post office side. Right? Why is it across the street that just took a farm? By the way, I did the twenty nine meters. That's a flood zone. I don't care what anybody says. Seen water, a foot and a half deep. Right across, went before subdivision. Zane was in that last week, cause I was there too. Went right over those people on Trump, like, can't believe it. We're just passing the turd from one end to the next, to the next. So my opinion is, is you wanna put a home in there, I, I'm not opposed to that. I ran a business, I'm capitalist, I know how that works. Like, forty foot apartments?
Apparently, here's my, here's my big, do you mind if I talk? My Charlie, my big concern is the. The bullseye is kind of moving. sprawling towards Old Town, it seemed like it was. Okay, where was that? That, that, that's my opinion is that the. We're, we're moving and catering. But we kind of have a plan. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Can I make a couple comments? Basically on this. Application, there's two things that are being asked here. One is. To revisit the street like regulating plan. Which we proposed something in that northeast corner there, and Charlie's kind of looking at the whole thing. More globally, and maybe that intensity should. Kind of transfer over to that side where it's flatter and probably more developable. Able, and then the second thing is to look at the architecture. We just wanted to have another option that we could come in with, that was more modern. And I, I think too, I understand why Charlie had to cut those out for the ordinance and things, but I think once you get landscaping and. The street done, and I think it softens it quite a bit as well.
Yeah, their original pictures are quite a bit more attractive than the cutouts that I'm showing you guys, but I cut it out because, you know, there's. But I cut it out because, you know, there's landscape, there's little details that may or may not be in compliance with the code. Um, so that would be adopted and codified version.
So we've heard folks say, generally, a little bit why pushing out to that northeast might not be great. From your perspective, why? What's in it for the valley? What's in it for the residents, the people of Eden? Whether they live in that particular area or not? What's in it for them? Why should? They, we want to see that Eden crossing as you put it.
Well, I think when Charlie originally drew this up, I think it was meant to be a little fluid. You know, I think we're coming in with a plan and we came in front of you guys. I think it was last month, kind of talked about the infrastructure that was going in. And this kind of follows that truck line back up to Wolf Creek from Ospey Ranch.
But originally, or on the original drawing, that was one acre.
Yeah.
Home sites all through that corridor. Now you've changed there, you're proposing something that's way more dense. How how dense is that?
Um, as far as the mixed use commercial and the multifamily, it's what they can recently fit on the property.
Roughly, how many?
Do you guys know what you can fit in?
I don't think we know at this point. We're coming.
One hundred, two hundred.
We're coming in for a text and then they're not actually resuming property.
So what's in it for the valley? Based on what you're coming in for, or pushing the map in a different?
Well, I think you'll see additional services in there. Additional services that will be in there. You know, Keith, you know, referred to the store, which is not the property that, you know, we have control of it. But, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on a new store, expanding the retail store.
So the valley market moving over there, which, don't you mean?
It's been a discussion, yeah.
But yours would be separate, yours is completely different.
Correct. But if you look at these, we have these little circles, and now we just have one big one. Like it it didn't go spot to that whole thing.
I think it comes down to, I think you're right. Yeah, that's what it would be. We keep going. Um, looking at this. Um, do we have this, the roundabout have to be the center? I think it has to be the center. Looking at the current map, as you draw it, you said you used what's already there. And then drew some outlining lines that would not be controversial. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Here, here's what I see is the reality of what's going to happen just because of what's happening now. That sewer line's going in. And that density is gonna want to go to sewer line, right? There's gonna be other multifamilies in this area if it gets resolved or if the text limited changes. The street plan changes, it's just gonna blow right there. Commercial or whatever else. So if you change that, it's gonna just snowball.
So I gotta ask you, if it does blow up, but it requires TDRs? Every, every blow up requires a TDR. Is that good or bad?
It's supposed to be TDR for commercial space.
Yeah, we haven't adopted that yet. You're right. We haven't said there's gonna be a TDR transfer for commercials.
And a part of that is some of the regulations on TDR are so lax. But it's like, well, most of it's from Wolf Creek or most of it's just moving from one zone to the other. So it doesn't really. A focus space that there was. So like sunny field, that one, what we did, that, you could say that creates something. You know, some of these ones where it's like, wow, we have two hundred here, two hundred over here at Nordic, let's move some over here because we can get it done.
Just stirring the pot.
I don't really know how that creates open space.
But what's there at commercial, which probably is already like.
And the only thing on this map that isn't a commercial um is this side. Most of this is not zone commercial over here.
But go to the one that they want.
Yeah.
A bunch of commercial there.
Uh, say it again.
Don't they want a bunch of commercial?
Yes, so you're right. So they're asking for, yeah, so they're asking for something.
Mixed use.
And it's been said the valley market will, it might move across the street to a bigger area. Has there been any discussion? Um, with planning department, what would go where the valley market currently sits?
There's been no discussion of the planning department on when and where the valley market has been moved to. I'm aware of where it's supposed to go to, but we haven't seen any proposal or site.
It's all been.
We're guessing.
But it's not the zone for that.
Not yet.
Part of the old building, that's just whatever.
So if you go back to Charlie's measles map, and with the measles match. From twenty sixteen general plan. Is we're gonna get rid of the measles. And we're gonna take some whole bunch of these measles and put it in these nodes. This is an area that was identified. And anybody looking at it from an area will say, yeah, you get the whole old creek and you got the. Four way and grocery store and all that commercial down there.
Except for those measles are densities and if we go to this new map, it's it's not, a lot of the spaces are not taken out. The density that they want is taken up.
I mean, the idea was every unit we can move from out in the farmland. To one of these concentrated places, we gain, we could do that open space in the farm. So this overall general thing, the general plan says. Try and get density from out inland, what's now the big open space that everybody wants to preserve. Put them in these concentrated areas. And this is one of those. It's got to be awesome. The problem is, everybody's excited about preserving all the farmland and the open space that you look at as you drive down the country road. But they don't want any more density in these areas where it's supposed to go. That's reality. And then.
Yeah, a lot of people are saying, no, we don't want density here.
Yeah, say Sunnyfield Farm, don't put her here. Put it in that guy's place over there. So that's, that's just. The the general plan says they can concentrate it. And that's what you're trying to do here, is concentrate.
So as a real example, it's even crossing, where will those development rights come from for that project?
Well, they have to be there, you can't do it.
Right, where, I mean, you 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 have no.
Sending areas.
But are they, uh, have you, this is a John Lewis project, right? Or a Wolf Creek or however.
Correct.
So. My understanding before my time here, the development rights have been popping around from various projects, is that right?
Down to the Village Center?
Well, or. No, nothing's moved official.
No.
Do you know where, do you have an idea?
I think we have an idea, but I don't know if that's something to disclose right now.
But we're we're talking about, you know, is moving, making this zone bigger, more density? Is that a good thing or bad thing? Does it reduce the the uh? The TDRs that are out in the farmland or doesn't it? I guess that's a question.
So this, this, so to your point, needs to come in. So the current map shows this area, this particular area as one acre, right, the one that's current drawn. So that would take some of those, it would fulfill the requirements of the general plan. So the real question is, how far do we want to take it, right? Do we really want to push it up or do we want to just leave it? Because the, as it, as it's drawn, going from three to one, does the exact same thing you're talking about.
Yeah, but I have heard something when I roll up with staff or somebody said. You gotta have more places to put these, right, to transform into. We gotta have more density. One acre lost is not gonna cut. It's just gonna.
But I think that's a subjective opinion.
My second comment was gonna be, I think I heard about a year ago, the county commission was talking about sewer system and. And okay, if we're gonna do sewer, it's gonna start in Eden because that's where the density is. So that's the place. Pardon? That was, yeah, that makes sense to put it here. It doesn't make sense to put it out where you got uh four, four hundred feet between houses. That prohibitively expensive, but you start from the place where you got the density and it makes sense. So, and that's kind of what we're seeing. I see all the pipes over there.
Well, there's a lot of density in Liberty areas behind Jared's house and the White House. Very, very close. The only reason that this, the sewer makes sense in Eden is because there's commercial.
Yeah. Well, before any of the commercial will actually fully come, we have to have the rooftops. And we're getting some of those, but before we get real viable commercial, we're gonna have to have a lot more rooftops.
That's one of the reasons why we focused on TDRs for residential only. Was because we didn't want to be punitive to the creation of that commercial, which is reliant on that um on those rooftops. They don't have the rooftops, the commercials stop, rooftops within a walking proximity, the commercials stop us by. And so we didn't add an additional punitive measure to creating that commercial either. Which is essentially giving you the tax base that'll drive the city of the city continues.
So does the applicant heard the petitioner? I'm not sure if this is an applicant, just in a work session. Do you have anything you'd like to add that we hadn't talked about?
No, again, I just think the application is asking for two things. You know, wanted to update the street regulating plan to shift some intensity over there for multifamily, mixed use. Um, and then also consider another option for the architecture. And you know, and our our hope is, you know, we're gonna be in front of you guys at the end of the month. Kind of get a recommendation.
I'll be posted it for public hearing here in the next little bit.
So it's your concept that this whole Eden area would be eighteen, nineteen?
No, the Newtown area is currently agriculture. And then uh the applicant's asking for the. So there would be a mixture of mountain modern and agriculture, the way that it is currently proposed. So you guys need to kind of figure out for yourselves, if you feel like the two of them can go well together in the same community. Um, there's another way that we could do it. You can say, all right, if we do allow development in the northeast quadrant of Eden. Maybe it's mountain modern and then the other is agriculture, or you didn't.
Was that good, don't you think?
Um, we saw it in our last.
I mean, you've had barns and stuff.
And shown this red barn.
There any?
Um, they could be. So you think about the Rose Compass Lodge and um and Huntsville, that is agriculture. Uh, architecture.
So some of the recently built buildings in the Newtown area. Bank or Credit Union Building, the Maverick, whatever else is, are any of those within that?
They're kind of new.
Design criteria?
I would say the Maverick is a little bit mountain modern.
But not agriculture. I guess my question is, are any of them agriculture now?
No, the old Maverick was uh ag. In fact, that was the old Maverick um theme was agricultural country store.
So now it's a little, just kind of a mountainish and kind of thing.
Adventure.
The applicants, the proposal mountain accent, kind of fits what's what's there more or less.
Yeah, across the street, you got a store that's kind of a log cabin.
So there is one building there already that fits that design criteria.
Multiple, like the Golden West, right?
Well, Sparkle Building kind of log, log.
No, I mean, well, Sparkle was brick, but it does have timbers uh.
Timbers.
That.
Maverick has a lot of timbers.
You have a picture of it stuck there of, it's got a dentist office and that's where Mount Luxury used to be. That's in that design criteria.
Yeah.
Cabin's. So you have one that fits this proposal, you have none that fits.
Agriculture.
Agriculture. And a bunch that are sort of kind of.
What are Snowcrisp? That's a big elephant there.
That's true. Uh, we can't touch the school district.
I know, but as you approach Snowcrisp, maybe a developer who has some flexibility to kind of trend into whatever Snowcrisp is.
The school district are a picture.
I think that's, it's a hard place to plan for because it's already been built out in a variation, right? I mean, like what, like we were talking about, you've got this on one side, then wooden shacks. And then the the market, and they're all vastly different. And.
It's gonna be very similar to what's happening downtown. Tear down and rebuild.
Yeah.
I mean, I, when I was in Ogden City, we were named Paul, did that. And, you know, a lot of the changes, you know, it's kind of looking at the future. Because right now, you've got a quite big bunch of stuff happening. See, before they built them all, this was really neat. Yeah. Great, because every building was a little bit different. Just like the west, the east side of Washington, we're going down Twenty Fifth Street and Twenty First Street.
Yeah.
They're all a little bit different. They're going in, if the church is good ship of the industry, beautifully, beautiful. And and somehow it works with that's around it, it's different.
The hard part is, it's a different time where, like, it used to be, you could build, you know, you built Ogden School, right? And it was like bricks, you just throw in extra bricks to make it look, you know, castley. Or the downtown building, you know, same thing. Well, now you can buy metal cheap and you can put up a metal building, right? Or you can buy these certain things super cheap that look cheap in a couple of years. So I, I think it's just, it's a different time.
It's also a a different mentality.
For sure.
You learn a little bit in planning school, when you study the history of planning. That the times in which the historic structures were built were during the city beautiful movement. Where there was a huge social push to provide beautiful buildings within the um uh private market was doing it. Uh, in response to the desire from the public. Uh, and we're kind of, we went through a different, you know, through the sixties and seventies, a different change where. At least government buildings were just blocks that's built as stale and uh efficient. Uh, with public tax dollars as you possibly can. And so we see ebbs and flows with different design types. But we're not in one of those city beautiful movement times right now. People put those metal prefab buildings up if they want. Not ever, whatever.
I got a question, one design is cheaper than the other by a long ways, and that's the hard part.
Eric, could you share some thoughts with us from a developer standpoint? You, you're requesting a little architectural tweak here. How you, how you can, you know, what, what do you think about when you think about designing a development? With an architectural standard, what are some of the components that go into your thought?
Well, we like the look. And again, we're looking at multifamily in mixed use. And we felt like we could go, you know, up easier with that kind of design. I mean, the code requires that first floor commercial to be fifteen feet. And I know you guys are going back and forth on height and and whatnot. Um, you know, we kind of put our examples out there. We were looking at the fifty feet that was in there originally. Um, the CBR one code that is the mixed use code in the valley right now allows fifty five feet. And if you're above sixty two hundred feet, you can go to seventy five feet. Um, so, I mean, we were kind of, and again, we're, the intent is to concentrate the density. So it's not spreading out. So we can get some numbers in there.
In in your mind, in your view, what makes a development successful? Why would you choose certain architecture to make it? I mean, you're, you're trying to sell stuff, right?
Yeah, and and truth be told, I'm, I'm not that guy that's drawing these up or, you know, picking and picking the design. We just felt like we could use another option down in the Newtown Eden. You know, and our applications are also, we're not asking to change Old Town or Nordic or those other villages. Um, I don't know if I have a great answer for you.
See, I, I look at that picture and I see Solomon Center there. Right over here.
Okay, that.
Where do they call it? Over in Detention. Yeah, and it, and it fits. You know, but there's, you go across the street to the theaters and they're totally different. But they are somehow compatible. That's all brand new with the motel, that's totally different, but it all works.
You know, I'm more of a land guy and, you know, the sewer coming through is is critical. You don't get this grouping of density without that ability to treat that wastewater.
Yeah. So when I talk about, we'll leave it open for a little bit of variance. I guess that's a good example of what I'm thinking of, right over here.
But then it's still subjective, right? If we would have had better, if you would, if there were a requirement to make it all look more similar, it could look good too.
Well, sure, but these are different. Well, sure, but these are different, they're they're really different. But they work. You can't look at one and say, oh, that doesn't fit here.
I think that the goal and the intention of having these, which is the right thing, is to try and be able to say. No, you can't put the storage units in because that's not meeting. Here's some way we can say, no, it needs to look better than what you're doing. I think that's the intention.
But in order for that to happen, they did have architecture. Yeah, but they were broad, so they they couldn't have been. It's got to be eighteen eighty to nineteen ten or you.
But if they weren't, if they're so broad, you won't be able to say no to anything. That's the problem. So storage units come in and say, well, we're gonna make a block and that meets the whatever requirement. Can't say no.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this uh conversation is productive. The county commission has already told us that they want to go in a particular direction with providing architectural standards. What we've already adopted, they're comfortable with and I we haven't, they haven't seen this version, but I don't think they're gonna drown at adding options. Uh but they do want architectural standards.
So the question is, um do we want to look at changing the map? Or like, does the plan, uh and as we see it, indicate that we should kind of move the. Move the the map or the the general plan or the the outlay as it is and kind of grow it and allow the mountain. I think generally the mountain fits the area. So I think that one I can answer, the other one is not uh not so easily answered.
Yeah, I think maybe we could bite this off at a few different chunks, but that's one of the chunks. And so that's, is anybody comfortable with that idea?
So 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 you've got really two questions, right? You've got a current map, which is not this one, but current map. Well, it's got all the other stuff in there, but it's close to that. Yeah, and so you've got an original map that's pretty close to what's there and, you know, um. And and you've got, the the question is, should we move it? Should we grow it? Should we shrink it? Should we change it anyway? And then the other question is, in this zone area, if mountain style. And whether those pictures are right or wrong, I don't know. I think I'd like to see more like the Powder Mountain layouts. I just kind of like them better, but subjective, so I'm kind of more leaning your way that way too, but I want to make sure we can say no to ugly buildings. So that's really the question, and I think in general, we could all agree that we're okay with the mountain style. Is that correct?
Did you guys read through the proposed text for the mountain style? Uh just near the back, I think.
Then I'm not suggesting we don't have design standard.
Your your point is, I totally agree. What is that about the county policy? What is, it's, how do you? You recognize that up there now is a whatever, half of Doug and Goings sort of have a certain look, but they're not farmable. And now you have this new proposal, which is a more trendy, maybe a more flexible look. So what if you replace farm, which there are none? This look or and a secondary look would be trying to define what's already up there.
Yeah.
And calling that a mountain rustic-ish, because I think you can mix. And where I came from in California, they, this design standard that's being proposed. Really grew up there in originally, but it really was defined there with a lot of architectural money. And it does mix, okay, with the more traditional mountain look, loggy look. And so what if you replace the farm, well, it doesn't exist.
With this.
So then you have a pretty wide range of flexibility. One of them exists, the other one does exist in the valley in a lot of places.
Yeah.
A whole lot of places and uh Wolf Creek has it, I live in a house like that.
Yeah.
Our mountain has it, there's a whole development like that. Um half of what's being built is like that. But what if you did that with the county commission receptive?
I think they'd be fine with that. They want to know it's gonna look good. Uh they don't have a very specific design standard in their minds that I'm aware of, I don't want to speak for them. Uh but I am aware that they want architectural design standards and architects uh designing these buildings. Um and so I don't think it would be uh hydro hair, uh changing from agrarian theme to mountain modern. Or mountain rustic or whatever you want to call it theme.
Could you call it mountain from rustic through uh modern? Because rustic exists.
I like the rustic idea a lot. I think it fits with the old town moving in kind of mountain rustic idea. And then it doesn't have to look old, I guess, doesn't have to be old, but just kind of have a.
Yeah, the more loggy.
Loggy.
Yeah.
Yeah. See, like these other ones, like the pictures shown here are not so much loggy, more boxy. And if you have more of a.
Would you be okay with both coexisting in the same area?
I mean, am I okay? Yeah, but if we're gonna make a plan, like, I think it should be more rustic for any logging, which kind of fits what's there, but. Like I said, I think kind of mountain one has a little more timber type look to it, but. I'm sorry, Nordic Valley. Valley.
Uh what did they call it? They uh.
Mountain modern or something.
If it was in.
Mountain Alpine.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Eric.
And you can probably call some of what's there in Mount Now. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this actually made, this will make my job easier because that section's already written uh regarding the architecture for Nordic. Would you guys be opposed to?
You know, I I think John's experience with like um Bruce Hall struggled a little bit with logs. I think we'd rather go away from it.
Okay.
Um but I could let him talk on that.
Yeah, and I don't think Nordic requires uh log uh cladding or anything like that. In fact, it's more um incentivizing stone um and wood, but it does allow a little bit of cement uh façades. As long as it's not more than a certain percentage.
Go back, can you go back to that one picture of the modernish building that's already there?
Hey Charlie, you might invite Eric to make any comments if you want.
Right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you good at this point?
Uh yeah, I think we're good at this point.
So I I think if you use that as the basis, because it's there. And you were to put one of the Nordic Valley designs near it or. They would not, in my opinion, flash a little terrible in the same general area.
I agree with you, it's got a stone base, it's got large timbers that are holding it up and cross beams.
Whether they're, whether they're logs or exposed beams or whatever, it has that same. You know, and it gives a lot of scope for development to to tweak and and make something their own.
And maybe we could combine a little bit of what you have here and what Nordic has and just expand on to what's in the Nordic one. And say that that architectural flavor applies to Newtown Eden as well.
Well, thank, I mean, you brought up Moose Hollow. And what's having a little bit of similarity design, not not to look the same. Like you say, logs or whatever, that's kind of a cool sign and I that's my, I I agree with this this.
Let me throw some words at you.
Okay, and then some words.
Some words.
Okay, mountain style.
Okay, you like that?
It doesn't have rustic in it.
Mountain style, calm, rustic. Old West. Those are two different things by my definition.
Okay, but they could be in the same area. Alpine. Compatible. In other words, elements from those things done in a compatible way, so they don't conflict with each other, they complement each other. It is, is that what we're looking for? That gives the flexibility that it maybe prevents the uh purple little white house on the corner of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There were another. Old West fits into my outlook down the range from mountain Alpine to this modern, I don't. Old West to me is more, you know, what you might see in downtown Huntsville.
Well, what I'm thinking of is Old Town Eden, that's Old West.
Yeah, but that's, and and what we've said so far is that that is what it is and this is different.
Well, then that's very, I'm suggesting it is compatible. These things all fit, they don't have to be identical next to each other, but they're compatible, they're done in compatible tones and. They don't shout at you.
Yeah, so so for example, someone wants to build a uh an old town Eden type design. In New Eden that would not be out of place, I don't know, it would be bad. Might not be, it's a mountain, but compatible is a good word to put it together.
You mentioned Moose Hall.
Yeah.
You bring a Moose Hall look in there, that kind of fits.
Yeah.
Yeah, you you bring the Nordic one, yeah, that that kind of fits. Okay, but all kind of fits, that gives us some general guidelines. And the ability to say, uh no, the cinder block that that fit. So we're giving an, we're drawing a big circle and say, yeah, you make it compatible and it well fits here. We'd like that, you try and bring in a. But picture world, you know, it's not really compatible with what we're talking about. Well, that might give lots of flexibility that I'm concerned about, yet tie things in to something that looks together.
I I would also push back, we need to make sure there's not lots of, I mean, I, you're right. But when you make sure we have the ability to say that doesn't.
Well, yeah. Within this.
Then you can fit a lot and.
Yeah, can you say some other words that would fit in? What, what words, might put some words. Make a compass roll, they got it all over there, they got the teepees there.
So I I think if I'm hearing everybody correctly. The general idea of mountain plan and rustic and maybe maybe making it a little bit more uh consistent with the area. And and so so the idea of mountain barn or mountain rustic is acceptable, I think. Mountain, yeah, kind of idea, which, how you define that, maybe you could put some things together that.
Yeah, I think we already had something.
Yeah, use use what you've got.
Okay.
And so.
This actually takes me to uh a thought that I had as I was thinking about, how do we, how do we allow? One particular village area to share different design themes? And will this question come up in other villages, which I think it will? Um I almost want to build a table that has different design themes. The description of each of those themes will be as they are or as we may modify them. And then just have have the table say in old or in Old Town Eden, you could do this design theme and or this design theme. Uh Newtown Eden, you could do these three or four and, you know, Liberty, it's this one or that one. And then as new design things come in, we just build that table where we know, you know, going down the main stretch of Old Town. That would really be nice to keep kind of that that mine town feel, but maybe as it stretches out or is on the other side of the park. Maybe there are some other design themes that can happen there. Uh would you be okay with, you taking a little stab at that? It may not be in this proposal, but maybe maybe anyone that comes forward.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a good idea. We should try, we need to, I mean, we we needed to look. No offense to anybody, the buildings are there, but we need to do better. We've got the the one building you showed, the shacks, you've got cut center block across the street. So we kind of are a mess, but.
Oh, yeah.
And you've got beautiful, you know, brick building that's there.
Yeah.
It's just, it none of it is, and then that that other commercial building next to the blacksmith auto or sterling, whatever. Is this mountain log like, I mean, that's kind of what we're going for, but it's kind of a hodgepodge thing, so. And to to the point, we, you know, as far as the blacksmith and the the lobs and. And that old building, some of those are are fine, you kind of fit there, you can show certain level of quality or I guess you could say quality. I don't know what I'm looking for in that word, but certain level of build standard and all, and others, you just kind of have bricks or blocks. And it's not so nice at all. Does that give you enough information in the work session to?
It does.
Okay, all right, any other comments before we get out of here?
I'd be interested in what, how they put this together over here. You know, what kind of designs?
They looked at more base. Anything else before we adjourn here?
If you guys are looking over the different alternatives, the three different alternatives that I've mentioned, there's no rhyme or reason. Uh there's no right answer, wrong answer, if you guys have ideas that are different, that kind of. Uh contemplate some of the concerns you have about the village area growing too much. Um shoot them over there and and I could throw out a few different ideas that you can go through in your public hearing. What I tried to do when you're looking at the uses, I tried to reduce the intensity of the uses that are on the far western side of the village. Because we're adding more intensity uses on the eastern side, so even though you see more lines, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's more intense on one side or the other. It just means that we're we're contemplating different roads, basically, so as you just flip through, you see the just differences.
So when you originally put that all together, did you ballpark any numbers? How many dwelling units, how many people?
No.
When potentially could live in that zone, how many cars would pass through there in a day? How many cars would be parked there overnight?
No, but I want to, that's that's a goal, yeah, it's a little challenging because we've got to go. There are so many different ways that we can answer that question in terms of what is the market gonna ask for. Um and so I'm hoping to get a range. Um I've actually been um asking uh Eric Langbar uh that very question on what could potentially fit in these areas? In a reasonable market, it's just, we're gonna have some variability on the answer because I don't know what market's gonna do for an air.
So somewhere else where I lived once, there was, it wasn't like this exactly, but there was some development direction, so. The county invited all the landowners to a planning session. So in this case, it'd be the people who own the grocery store, the land or Wolf Creek and and they all kind of. It was kind of one of those things where you could say what you want and everybody kind of threw out what their vision was.
Good town hall meeting, yeah.
But it was limited to to that situation. And so it brought things to the surface that were not known before about who. You know, there was an existing shopping center and the owner was planning to tear it down and rebuild it. No one really knew that because it was a couple of years out. There's a potential to do that in for this area.
Definitely, there is that potential in this area. We did that on in Old Town Eden, but we only had maybe the key stakeholders were about eight to ten. Um associated with that.
But we did have a um, we didn't have a meeting over the Bowery that we invited the public to.
We did, but not a lot of people showed up.
That's true.
I mean, it's just, it was.
The same, ordinary usual.
But you have a relationship to some degree with most of the players in this area, is that right? And your party does one way or another.
The public hearing is a good place for that, for this, right? Isn't that where they could come and get some help?
It definitely is, but a lot of times they, you know, take it after that opportunity.
But so I think we each is, so we need to look at this in maps and determine which way we want to look at this. And when you become prepared to, so that we can, we all have in input we'll want to give. Yeah, but like, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is the next meeting when this comes up. We need to be prepared to to kind of know where we stand on these maps. Thinking, keeping in mind that Charlie drew these maps just arbitrarily, right? So we need to give direction at that meeting and in the motion for which of what we, how we want it to seem. And we were, I guess it'd be better if we had that tonight, but it doesn't sound.
I have a question about Eden Crossing again with respect to short term rental, is it? Your vision that those units would be rentable by the night?
Uh they could be, based on the form based code.
Yeah, the changes that you guys requested, if if the county commission goes with them, which so far it sounds like they they will. Limit short term rentals to multifamily, mixed use commercial, vehicle oriented commercial and government institutional, actually, no. I think it takes it out of multifamily.
I thought they already did those, those were already adopted, the short term.
Yeah, so this is the changes to the form base code that you guys were working on.
Did we make more changes to the short term rental portion of that that we didn't go over?
Yes, actually, we might have glossed over that, but we didn't in the, you might not have been there at that meeting, we didn't in the. Yes, actually, we might have glossed over that, but we didn't in the, we might not have been there at that meeting. We didn't in the work session.
Listed in the, you weren't there in the public hearing version.
Should have been in the staff report, uh, listed in there.
So for clarification, multifamily does not allow.
If, if the county commission adopts it as proposed by both planning commissions, it wouldn't allow it. Something to think about. And that doesn't mean that if with specific developments, we can't. Do development grants or something that would allow it in certain places.
Has the county commission, maybe I misread, haven't they said they are not going to expand short-term rental in? About?
No, there, there are a lot of folks who are saying that. I think they're saying it because they're hoping it's true. What the county commission has said is as for now, we're not talking about changing where they're. Which the form-based zone, they were allowed, it just, that zone didn't apply to any property.
Of course, the county commission did say is that they want to get a handle on what we currently have. That's why they are frantic. And they want us to come back and revisit it in a year or two. And that first report's forthcoming. Around that. But they, I, I fully intend that probably in a year or two, they'll like come back and look at it and say. Is it appropriate? Now we've got a handle on it or is it not? Or have we got a handle on? But based on the numbers that came in, it's totally different than what the public has put out. It's much less as far as short.
So suggests if you're looking at a village area, you could alleviate some. Private market pressure of short-term, if you allow them in those villages. You could design your villages so they're specifically designed for short-term. So something to think about for form-based, that's actually what we had originally contemplated when we were looking at adding short-term rental into. The form base was, yes, they're happening all these other places. Maybe we could focus them in these particular areas.
So what, what channel you're reviewing, crossing, change.
When?
You told Trevor that you kind of glossed over some changes to the STRs in form-based.
So the majority of the discussion that we had, uh, was focused around, um, TRs. And focused around, uh, the moderate income and height. However, in our work sessions, the planning commission seemed to be pretty uniform in their consensus that. They wanted to follow suit with what Western Weaver did. And Western Weaver said mixed-use commercial. Multifamily and government institutional are the only streets in the street regulated by, that they want short-term rental to be allowed. Let me, just to clarify the confusion, let me make sure we're clear. Short-term rentals were already allowed in the form-based zone all the way through, I want to say it was the, um. Uh, medium lot residential, but as a conditional use. But that was all predated to be short-term rental or the adoption of short-term rental ordinance.
Started in Old Town, or was it the start of? And that was two or three years ago. Where were they allowed originally?
Short-term, yeah. Um, I don't think we actually addressed it short-term in the original. I think it was in the Nordic. Changes, so that would have been argued to this.
Okay, so when, so things you just pulled Trevor and maybe you go forward.
Well, those are the kind of things that are scary is the, oh, we didn't talk about that one.
We did, we did talk about it.
Yeah, we did.
It might not have been in that particular. Yeah, I think both of you were gone.
So rather than, you might, if you stated the other way, you stated where is still allowing you. Can you state where it was retracting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, here, I'll hold it.
Down to fixed use, government institutional and commercial. So it was broad, more broadly reduced.
Yeah, we agree with that. We, we hit it on the whole session. Maybe you're standing on the chair.
Anyway.
All right, guys.
We were, we were.
Hey, I gotta go get some blood irrigated. Are you flooding over there?
So, on the screen here, it was allowed, okay, it wasn't medium lot, it was allowed in. Small lot residential as a conditional use. And then multifamily residential, mixed-use, vehicle-oriented, commercial and GNI. Uh, and what the changes have done is it changed that P to an N for not permitted in the multifamily. And this C, small lot residential is not permitted as well. And then just left the three Ps and those other ones.